Ah yeah, by the way, we starting right away. I am fed up today. I am fed up today, I don ' t care. Fuck the rules. I don ' t give a shit. And demonetized, but I I I ' m not monetized at all, so. Why is it on the score now? Did you change the name or did I just not realize? Uh, hello. Again, thank you, thank you, uh, Tiny Art Goblin. It ' s a tiny art couple. No, tiny cute couple. I need I need to be need to be precise about my made up nomenclature. So thank you, thank you for following. Appreciating. Tiny Art Goblin. And as you can see, the name Tiny Art Goblin is an artist. If you want to look at what uh what what she does, then then there ' s a name, it ' s here, it ' s right there, right down there, bottom left. It is kind of funny because those like N S F W, so bottom left is kind of funny. That ' s a known meme, I realized. But it is still kind of funny. It is still kind of funny. So, hello everyone. Sorry if um I fucked up my entry. So I ' m making it everyone ' s problem. Why? Because I ' m a vindictive asshole. So. Um, yep, I am vindictive. I don ' t care. Uh, so. What else? What what will be doing? Uh, what we be doing? Uh, technically. Uh, what we be doing is technically like we just, I ' m just going to work on the on the Tetra Peg. Uh, and why? Because I can. Yeah, literally. That ' s the entire reason. Just because I can. There actually some interesting research recently about historical stuff. It ' s DNA, so people are going to be pissed off. I don ' t get, it ' s a science man. It ' s a fucking science. I I don ' t decide it. I don ' t decide what the fuck is a science. I don ' t have an op. I I don ' t have like, is that an opinion? It ' s just discoveries, you know? And a few years, maybe discoveries will change. It depends. I doubt it, because the technologies have evolved and shit like that, so. I doubt it would change much, to be entirely honest. Um, because honestly, it just just the way it is, the the way it is, it ' s it ' s science. Um, okay, thank you. Um, this is science. Hello Schnombe. What are you doing, Schnombe? By the way, I ' m going to listen to very, very pacifistic music. That may not have been not French. It is. It ' s not in French, but it ' s French. So if you don ' t like very pacifistic music that does not include. I ' m vibing retired. Ah, I ' m also like quite tired. Mostly because I ' ve stopped, I ' ve not been drinking. I ' ve stopped drinking for quite a while. So now I ' m, my brain is like, ah, too much energy. And I ' m like, yeah, but the alternative brain, you have to think about that. And my brain is like, I don ' t care. And I ' m like, okay, fine, guess I have to deal with it. And I ' m dealing with it. It ' s just, you know, it ' s just, it ' s a choice. It ' s a choice. I ' ve made the choice. The choice has been made. And thus, here we go. And stop. It ' s web, it ' s web rap metal, in a way, of hardcore beatdown. A beatdown hardcore is actually the the genre. Perfection. I just like it. Sorry if you don ' t, but that ' s just what I like. And goddamn, I I need the energy. I fucking need it. So I am not going to say much about that. What else? Um. I made the mistake of looking at social media and shit before the stream. So I saw like a bunch of drama. And I don ' t care if it ' s right or wrong. It ' s, I don ' t care. Uh, it is because what the fuck is, am I, is going to change. It ' s just people on social media screaming at each other. No matter if it ' s valid or not, it does, they ' re screaming at each other. I don ' t think it changes anything. The thing, I don ' t think it changes anything. People may disagree. I don ' t care. Uh, it ' s Yes, it ' s my view on things. If they don ' t like my view on things, I can go elsewhere. So I ' ve changed things a bit. Uh, because then I it can actually look like I ' m actually looking at the chat and the stuff. But I think it ' s just better for you to see the stuff that I ' m doing. Na 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 na, give it all it ' s light. I need to check the scale of. Um, you know what? Do I want to start with that or do I want to beat the uh the annoyance down with the game first? Let ' s just play the game first. How can you do can you get a kick? Last metacash compact. Yo. Um, let ' s just start with the game, because in all honesty, I need to like, I ' m I ' m too annoyed right now, so I ' m I ' m just going to like beat up the It ' s a demo of a game that I ' m being very much, oh my fucking god, of course it does. Sorry. Ah, I I love when. Can it switch? I need to see if I can actually switch it around. Game. Okay. Game. Okay. Yeah, hello, hello, Aldrich. We ' re gonna start with an interesting game if if the demo wants to load. Game. Are you alive, game? Oh, game has resurrected. Game has resurrected. It ' s a game, I I don ' t about the demo yet, the demo. Can I do full size uh windows? I can actually move it around. What the fuck? It ' s in. Is it in Frankish? Wait. Is it? The fuck? What the hell? But I ' m just starting the game. Wait, do I ever get, wait, 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 there ' s no sound in game capture. Oh yeah, because game capture does not capture the game, that ' s why. Okay, sorry. I ' ve not done it in a while. Specific window. No, it says that, what? Window. Oh yeah, I had to do that because it was fucking up. I remember. That ' s the game we ' re gonna try to play tonight. Oh my god, why? Oh, that ' s a, that ' s a big margin. That ' s a weird as format. If I do full screen now. Fuck. Yeah, I can. Okay, oh, I can change the screen. This one. Yes! Sorry. Most of the time it doesn ' t work, so I ' m kind of happy about it. Oh yeah, game is loud. Sorry. Sorry, it ' s been, it has been multiple OBS update. It has been multiple OBS update, so everything is fucked when it goes to my game capture. Okay, that seems better, right? Or is it too low? Is it in Frankish? No. Maybe, I don ' t know. Rules. I can play with controller? The heck? It ' s a card game. Mostly. Let us switch to controller. Yep, let ' s do that. Uh, safe changes. Um, again, please tell me if the game is too loud or too low. Uh, the game is game Crowns Gambit. It ' s actually a a game based on Frankish history. Nya nya nya, fucking that. Okay, whatever. You know what I mean. Most of the gameplay is card. You know what I fucking mean. Which we said the same thing I did, but more aimily. Uh, so. Uh, that ' s literally what we ' re playing today. Uh, it is based on the history of Charlemagne and his paladins and of the war of succession that followed. A bit of a civil war that followed the death of Charlemagne. Which is very interesting. Uh, because there is not many game it. Yeah, we ' re gonna see that. We ' re gonna see that. We ' re gonna see if it actually is. Okay. No, this engagement access. Oh, that ' s a difficulty. Clever tactics, boss is kind of no stat, but it says your character. It ' s not spoilers, it ' s literally the intro of the game. I ' m gonna draw you now, saying beef as well as graph coin. Okay. Hello Tris. I I wonder where it comes from, but okay, I ' m not good. I mean, if you have a good time and I ' ve definitely had worse propositions. Um. Uh, what was I saying? Is okay. By the way, is that not spoilers? It is with the intro cinematic. And the intro cinematic cinematic has been posted on the account of the artist for quite a while and not the actual game. So it ' s not a spoiler. I ' m going to try the normal difficulty. You know what? I ' m going to try and you could see me as a dumbass, like failing miserably. Okay, cinematic time. Again, is the game too loud or is that the right volume? They are literally telling it. What? Okay, that ' s fiction. Does it move away from that? It could be a tad, okay. Okay, that ' s fantasy now. I did not do that part. It ' s a crown. Okay, that ' s fully fiction. Okay, so. Herzen Castel. Okay. Okay, Meirzon. Okay. Okay, that ' s Arthurian. Okay, that ' s fully fiction. I was wrong. Okay. Okay, le chariot, it ' s a chariot, soleil, sun. Yozmu. Oh, I love his artwork. I love his art style. Sorry. Temperance, it ' s literally temperance and the soleil is the sun, the chariot. It ' s it ' s tarot cards. It was a tarot card. Such a good art style. Sorry, I just I just love it. And good good voice acting. Good accent. I like it. And I like that they keep the name of the tarot card in French. Uh, the um. Okay. Okay, I ' m going to try to pronounce those fucking names. Okay, audio store. I shall never get used to such horrors. Voice acting beef is back. Oh no, it ' s a woman. My my weakness because my voice does not sound very rumbling. Sir Rollo, Sir Eil, I will let you take care of yours. We must get rid of them as soon as possible. How do I do his voice? Understood. Let us cut their throat. Not only priestly of you. On guard, motherfuckers. Uh, okay. I ' m, you know what, I ' m going to, can I switch? Hmm. I ' m going to switch to um. I ' m going to switch to to the mouse. If I can. I ' m going to switch to the mouse because it ' s a card game and I I I like to know where, mostly a card game. Uh, because I like to know where I ' m pointing in uh in this kind of setting. Okay, how does That ' s basic attack. Okay. And I do it without tutorial. Can you move ahead? Okay, but you can only do one action. Okay, that ' s pretty severe. Eleven, okay. There ' s no, no bloody joke. Okay, should I? You will not advance fast enough. Let us show them what we are capable of, paladins. Of course, there ' s, oh, that was a woman. Sad. Uh, heartbreak. Let us show them what we are capable of, paladins. I ' m trying. Uh. Uh, yes, but. Okay, up, okay, because I I ' m used to like drag, yes, attack. Oh, you can now attack in front of you. Oh, that changes things. Okay, what is that? Which is in that center button that did seven damage to it? Uh, grounds well. Damage to characters, death facing, yes. Yes. Oh, that ' s good. Good animation. I like that. A shoulder charge. Okay. Oh, that. Okay, that ' s all three characters. Nice sweep. A adjacent tiles. A bit of a waste, but that was a, they said that it was supposed to move quickly. Uh, the damage effect we can turn adjacent, adjacent. Uh, yes. Oh. Yes, because then I can kill that one. Oh, it ' s everyone in front. Okay, even better. Uh. Okay, so it ' s only adjacent. Okay, four. Enemy stern. Oof. Okay, my priest is eating shit a bit. Oh, there ' s more of them. Kiltor, what is that thing? Careful, he is attacking. What is that? It ' s a vampire? Hundred and twelve? Okay, I meant to lose it. Rollo, Eliza, Eliza, no! Consider abomination, I shall destroy you. That ' s story time. No, that was not enough. Rollo, Eliza, forgive me. He ' s about to die. He ' s not? I guess he escaped. Oh! Dot, dot, dot. A nightmare again? I might have overused my relic in the past few weeks. Phew. Down is breaking. I should get ready. Sir Eil, are you ready? John is down. Okay, so that ' s character. John is down here. We will get back on the road shortly. I ' ll be there in an instant. In this instant. Okay. Is the outside clear? Hmm. It seems there is no one. The kid wasn ' t ready to leave yet. We will wait for them a bit. Okay, so he got a nightmare. Rollo? They ' re like, wait. Duke of Normandy? Rollo, were you not a fisherman before? Do you know anything about our destination? Orper? Wait, I know that. Orper, I heard of it, but never been there. They say it ' s a small fishing village. They get by, I heard. I wonder, what 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 could the royal family have to do here, have to do there? Little. I ' m curious about that. I curious to know too. I ' m fucking up. Why were we chosen to escort them even though we are novices? I am curious as you are, Sir Eil. We could ask Sir Alphonse. Yes, too quickly. Yes, I come. Hmm. Neptus, yeah, definitely. Yeah. Okay, fully fiction, fully fiction. Sorry, nothing to do with the Franks. Hmm. It has been so long since I last slept on straw. We shall provide you with better bedding in Orper, my lord. The Protect of Galiyihad. Okay, that ' s definitely Arthurian. Um. Hello. Hello, welcome. I forgot about some stuff. I forgot about some stuff. Um. Forgot about some st. Eh, eh, eh. And uh, just a cheeky little. Fuck. That is not, wait, there ' s another Gumiemi. There is. I did not know that. Okay, that ' s that ' s that ' s an impostor. Here to protect you from the evil tyrannies.
I am here to protect you from the evil tyrannies. Okay, maybe not, but at least here to keep you in happy vibes.
It is a good link. It is a good link. Okay, link provided. Lobaia force Paladin. By no means shall anyone in this inn know about our mission. That ' s quite the stash, let me say that. Does it work up with a stash that way? Because that that could be annoying. But then you wake up like, bion. You know, like like. Do not concern yourself with my comfort. I shall I shall make do with what we have the coming nights. I will go and fetch the prince. Get ready to leave. Wait, is it the prince? Oh my god, he looks like a nerd. No, I ' m joking. He looks like a basic, basic prince. The Galia had bit on the nose. But. Oh! The younger priest of Meodred, son of King Neptus II and Queen Medith. Uh, where is the rumors about Prince uh Noah Moretz? Oh my god, bastard, to be tr, uh, where where the rumors about Prince uh Noah Moretz? Uh, bastard, to be true, Galia had would be the true heir to the throne according to Meodred ' s law, which is pretty much basic medieval law. Neptus, uh, king of Meodred and husb, and husband of Queen Medith. That ' s what a quite a fancy beard. Um, father of the bastard Avroc and of three legitimate children, Galen, Galenmo. Uh, no, Marret, no, Moret and Galia had. Neptus, elder brother of Ka of Neptus. And we can do with bruder. A former instructor of the paladins, know the protector of Galia had. Neptus, he once lost his wife, oh, under tragic circumstances. The fuck is that? Can he fart on me, the motherfucker? Okay, Pando needs to die soon. Need to die again. This could be your fa, your your fifth death, Pando, you motherfucker. And hello, hello everyone. Uh, needs to die again. Um, he is the only Paladin in fight that we think is relic Lu has. Uh, rumor has it that this is a huge horn, that this huge horn is too devastatingly powerful to be used unless in the most dire of emergencies. Uh, yeah. Hail, an orphan. He was rigorously raised by the Order of Ancest, oh my god. Um, Order of Ancestors in Latsem Abbey. Which, what? The pagans. What? Abbey? Okay, whatever. I guess it ' s mega merger, which he almost never left because he ' s a monk. Uh, he became a Paladin at the request of of Great Muiring, who asked King Neptus II to strengthen the ties between the Order and the royal family. He was, so he support order. It was like Abbot, Abbot, I guess. He was trained by Ser Gabriel. It ' s Gabriel. Gabriel is Gabriel. Also former member of the Order. I ' ll use the relic Starshade, a morning star able to shine late, powerful enough to blind or even burn his targets. Rollo, are you? A Duke of Namandy. Uh, son of Pesca, an influential immersion from Acasty. Okay, Scasty. The city of Castile. Uh, he was stripped of everything when his family was massacred by an angry mob. Why? Uh, he became a sailor and defending Princess Galenmo Neptus against the monster Yozmuun, Yozmuun. By slaying it with the ship ' s anchor. This anchor was transformed into a relic that Rollo could no wield. His unnatural precision. His act of bravery allows allowed him to join the Paladin Corps where Sir Yu have. Sounds like a Jewish Paladin. Hello, Yu have. I don ' t know. Uh, took him under his wing, his wing. Jozmuung. An abominable sea monster with jaws bristling with sharp fangs and poisonous tentacles. Uh, craving fresh meat, mean like every single predator on the planet. He could burst out of the depths at any time to devour the crew and passengers of a lanky ships. It ' s a kraken. The Jozmuung was finally killed by Rollo during sea, during a sea voyage. When he attacked his ship and tried to eat Princess Galenmo Neptus. I doubt it was targeted. It ' s like, hmm, I ' m going to look at the ancestry. Er, deity of inner peace. Okay. Goves. Deity of fire and craftspeople. Oh, uh. Uh, that ' s, okay, ah, I could scroll down. Eliza. Youngest daughter of Norrigen, oh my god, Starg, a blood crest. More interested in the heroic tales of Vermessa than in the intrigues of the nobility. Based, she joined the Paladin Corps uh when her mother called in her favors with King Neptus II to place uh their nepo baby. Uh, she became the second woman to join the Corps after Sir Mariana Manto, nepo baby. Uh, a relic is vermeil. Okay, vermeil is another color for red. A broken sword with alloyer to wield blood red, blood red, vermeil. That tracks, that tracks. Uh, unlocked entries. King of, King, yeah, already read that, read that. Nobles of Meodred. Okay, that ' s weird. The order is divided into numerous houses, the most prominent, the most eminent of which are the motherhouses. Oh no, a maester, Ilios, Pangloss and Thurder. The lands of the four motherhouses surround those of the royal house, royal house. Together they make up the great kingdom of Meodred. With that, ancestral orders. The order of ancestors of the clergy of ancestralism. Meodred ' s main, is Meodred ' s main religion, ancestralism, pretty to benefit the ancestors as a pagan. And as they are tall, most among them, with the king of deities, its holy book is the Alakazan. The order of ancestral is led by the great Muiring. People of Morad, uh, under the reign of Neptus II, the people of Meodred enjoy a fragile prosperity. Wars, epidemics and famines have become rare, even though civil peace remains precarious. And though the ever increasing taxes, terrible rebellion, everyone hates taxes. Let us be honest, I hate taxes. Zitak. Zitolk. Deity of nugent truth because he talks. Uh, Vermes, uh, first queen and and allegedly founder of the Grand Kingdom of Meodred, doing a diversion. Deity of war, victory and vengeance, sounds based. Duty of war, victory, and vengeance. Sounds based. Uh, deity of morality and honor. Sounds kind of boring. Ru, deity of heritage, blood, and family. What a interesting concept. Oh, that sounds. Hero of Alkusan, the holy book of. Who suffered, but why? Abolish about torture, why? Is it is it what it do matter plot? Alphonse, why are those here with us? Is he a prick? Your father tasked me with finding reliable and discreet paladins to accompany him to Orper, your majesty. Little cunt. Our three new recruits were exactly the pattern requ- required for this quest. But you ' re the strongest of the bear. Why would you need them? Fuck you. Dude, I already want the baby to die. Probably not, my little prince. We shall, oh, he said little. That ' s going to trigger him. We shall protect you. Hey, am I right or am I right? I know he was a little asshole. Do not kill me, little prince. Me. Quiet! Soon I ' ll celebrate my eighth spring. Oh my god, I want to slap the shit out of him. I ' ll finally be allowed to bear my own sword and my father. What? Eight? I thought it was earlier for a page. He has been slacking. I ' ll finally be allowed to bear my own sword and my father will never need garden next to you anymore. Yes, he will. You ' re a king, you little idiot. Sadly. Uh, politely. Wait, I have actually, ooh. Ooh. Well, yeah, you know what? Hmm. Should I go with based with base to fuck you, baby? Or with noble? Let ' s let ' s try noble. Should I let the king intervene? What? I ' m curious what the king will say. Members of the royal family must show great deference to our devoted members of the Paladin corp, little cunt. He did. Your mentor should reassess the very fundamentals of decorum. AKA, your manner sucks. Shut the fuck up, child. You treat disappoint me, my child. I allowed you to accompany me on this journey, but I shall not stand for your plurality. You suck. Who taught you, little bitch? I ' m going to slap you with a slap them. Wait, someone. You, get out of here. Hey, I had nothing as well. I won ' t tell anyone the royal family is there. Okay, he ' s the worst guy ever. He already failed. He already failed. What did you just say? What? I won ' t tell. Oh my god, he ' s horrible at it. Well, I won ' t tell anyone about the king ' s presence in this inn. I apologize, my lord. The commoner could spread the news of our presence here. We cannot risk anything. Not in a mission of such importance. I concur. Take him away. And do one needs to be done, Paladin. The idea is unpleasant, but our quest cannot be undone. So many lives at stake. Very well, sire. Hey, who are you? That ' s uh. You know what? He ' s a priest. You killed an innocent? I did what was necessary, novice. Nothing to cry about. Let us leave. You know what? I I ' m going to try to be as as fast as a trail. I like this game a lot. It ' s very dark soldiers, which is, yeah, in the in the sense of like you can share what the encounter. Hmm, that ' s a danger. What? I I will do all of the, because it ' s a demo. So I want to do as much as a content in the game as possible. Jezebel, is that a red flag? Oh yeah, by the way, uh, I ' m just going to move myself really quickly. She looked like this. Oh, fuck. Indeed, it has been a long day. Why don ' t you stop and waste a while? With you, who looks, has red eyes. Again. Got some French plonk. And not too full at at that. She wants us to be be. Drunk? No. Are you offering us a drink just like this? She ' s very based at the moment. I ' m a general soul, you see. No, that ' s called a trick. I would share a drink. Don ' t you want to taste? Uh, no, I agree with her. That ' s far too suspicious. That ' s far too suspicious. We are in a hurry. We cannot rest. Unfortunate, general souls are rare in times like these. Boy, you never left, you never left your monastery. Let 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 people who have dealt with nonsense deal with this. We cannot trust anyone, Paladin. What if this been actually a good option? Because I want it to be like, hee hee. Oh, what? Yeah, I know how you got it. Wait, what? Oh, it ' s when you see all of the dialogues. Okay. Let us waste any time and find and find out what ' s next. Encounter. There ' s a lot of them for a demo. Let ' s talk. Encounter. Friends, some travelers set up camp on the roadside. I wonder why they hold so much. And it ' s. Dude, she ' s based. I ' m sorry. Their mission is to not get detected. Their mission is to go smoothly back to to Ar- to Orper. So. Let us be discreet. Our mission is confidential, paladins. Must I remind you? She ' s based. I ' m sorry. Eliza ' s right, buddy. Alright. I ' m sorry, she makes smart decisions. I ' m s- I mean, she may be a nepo baby, but she may be like the find of a century. Uh, Glaurex. Oh, Glaurex. Oh, that sounds like Bretonnican folk. She ma- Glaurex. That ' s of the Karnak and Kabarnak. Sir Alphonse, you said we were obviously the most qualified for this quest. I like her. She ' s she ' s paranoid like me. But there is nothing obvious about choosing the three youngest and most inexplicable paladins to escort the king outside the capital. Hard to deceive, daunt you, lady bloodcrest. Yes, it ' s good thinking. That ' s pretty obvious. Sorry to say, but that ' s. Dude, that ' s pretty obvious. I am a lady no more, sir, but a paladin. I almost want to make a joke about pronouns, but I ' m not going to do it. Forgive me. Hey, he ' s based as well. Good. Some respect. That ' s nice. About your inquiry, you are, you are what? You are very rare si- ve, okay. You are a very rare sight among the Paladin corps. Individuals not marred in court intrigues and political schemes, AKA they didn ' t have the time to make a network yet. You might be the only people I can trust to keep our journey a secret, AKA everyone that ' s been long enough to be bought off or to have their own plots. Hmm, I see. Was I right to believe so? We shall honor, we shall honor the trust you put in us. What the fuck is that face? She looks like, I have a proper mission. God damn it, trust. What is this? I ' m born to nobility. Trust does not exist. But I actually, that ' s. Hey, little one. Hey, I want to do, every time I see that, I want to do stupid noises. Hey, I want to do stupid noises when I see people at extermation point. Hmm, my prince, thy, thy dad, your father was a bit rough. Fathers can be like that sometimes. That ' s who they care about us. Dot, dot, dot. Doten, doten, doten. I would prefer if he cared another way than. No, you need it, you little cunt. It ' s good discipline. Look there. Oh, gibbet. It seems the brigands have been hanged. Indeed. I shall tell your majesty. Hey. I do, I ' m doing like a voice acting, but. Yeah, I do it a pretty good way. It ' s like the Minecraft like pain sounds. Ooh. Yeah, it ' s pretty good actually. Minecraft beep dot E X C. Uh, wah. Uh, the young prince is a bit young to see in such a horrid thing. Oh, he should. It ' s medieval times. Show him the gibbet. Show him the justice. And. There is a bill stuck next to it. I will look at what it says. Uh, for endangering the life of a noble envoy of House Ameister and the votary accompanying him, these brigands have been hung high for all to see because they suck balls. In a non sexy way. Mother, uh, motherhouse Ameister. Known for its neutrality and values of wisdom and peace. That ' s, okay. I was like, the bodies are not very peaceful. Uh, motherhouse Ameister advocates for access to knowledge for all. So complicated, I guess. Lord Varek. Varek means like seaweed. There ' s a varek. Okay, Ameister. The royal physician to Neptus II. Opposed his ideas despite despite the reluctance of the rest of the nobility and the Order of Ancestors, his half sister Trimara fears the ambition of the motherhouse Thulder and wishes to strengthen their troops with advanced technologies. Oh no, guns. Uh, their motto is, our minds are sharp. Game of Thrones reference dropped. Because the um, the motto, uh, the motto of uh, the um, of the boltons is, our blades are sharp. Game of Thrones reference dropped. And their relic is the lectern of truth. A lectern is literally like a, like what you use to read books. I know like the, from inventory. A votary, as priest of the nobility, the votaries preach the word of the deities amongst the aristocracy. Mostly in the upper levels of waysb- basilica. So it ' s like Catholic, so it ' s like Catholic aesthetics with pagan goals. Okay. Hmm. What does he want? Uh, I mean they ' re bandits. Like I ' m sorry, but. Let ' s do that. Those guys don ' t respect anything. Not even the law to protect them. They got what they deserve. What? Rollo gets closer to the Meodras nobility. What? Sometimes when dialogues are finished of your pilots, what they get, oh. Oh, there ' s actually factions mechanics. Each Paladin have different affinities that will sometimes change their reaction and face. Oh. At least the roads are more secure now. Hey, you know. Halt! Who goes there? Ah, Pomprunel. Okay. Pomprunel is like a joke. It ' s like Goberto Noanet. Uh, Goberto Noanet de Pom- de Pimprunel. At your service. Want it French accent? You got French words? What it, what is it you want? You are paladins, are you not? Hero of the High Road. Is he like, oh, fortunate, I, what, 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 what? Even too quickly. Ah. Rabid dogs. Save yourselves. Wait, little rabid dogs? I guess literally because I heard growl, like literally, okay. Where is this Pimprunel? This is nothing but a bunch of small fry. Take care of the brig- of these brigands. That dogs? Um, well, I protect his majesty and the prince. Second one about here on this card, when selected, your paladin can perform one of the following, a move as the player takes a, yes. Encouragement. Uh, yeah. Ooh. Okay. Uh, I ' m going. Uh, please one. What? What? Uh, if he dematerials to snake to to an adjacent, yeah, but, okay, I don ' t. Okay, I don ' t get how to change the stuff. Maybe it doesn ' t have an encouagement. Maybe because it ' s the first turn. She ' s going to eat shit. I love her ha- armor. Tasty. I know, because. Oh. Okay. So like. I ' m done. Okay. Uh, that one. I think that ' s, wait, how many actions we have? I have two actions. Okay. Uh, I need to move there to try to spread the damage. Oh, immobilized. But that ' s a wound. I guess I could, oh, bleed. Okay. So I guess it ' s, okay. Alright, so now we don ' t have a choice. Uh, he has three actions. Every Paladin uses such a, okay, free and reserve. Each round, okay. Okay, that ' s a reserve. Immobilize, cannot use his skill, poison dagger. Yeah, that guy. Cause then he takes, uh, free, el- elder brother. Swap places with adjacent ally. No, not really. Damn. Uh, you illusion. Okay. I did seven damage, apply one vulnerability, whip. He has a whip. These seven damage they get, no matter what is, ooh. Uh, at the moment. That one is better, I think. And let ' s just finish that one. Uh, then with. Another one down. Keep your focus, sir. We are not done yet. We must ensure none of them endanger the king nor the prince. She has taken some damage. I ' m going to. Do that. And then. Can I do it again? No. Uh, free. I guess that ' s a character and if it bleed, uh, yes, because maybe I can kill them with it. I don ' t know much bleed does. She had used the actions, idiot mode. Can I move? I cannot move. Swap places because no, I ' m I ' m, yeah. I can ' t move right now. Uh, okay, bleed only last a turn. Okay. Whoa, 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 what the fuck? Whoa. Ouch. Ouchies. Then someone. Can I stop getting farted on? Is someone, is someone doing it or is it just like the? Uh, reverse is a particular target to get this doesn ' t know. Oh, fuck. I. Oopsie. Uh, I didn ' t know. Uh, push the gender, get back one tile. Okay, I cannot do that. Get untouchable. Oh, I cannot do that either. Uh, six, yeah. Let's do that. And purge the blind. I just give to it. Oh, they lick their wounds. Wait. I need to kill that one. Um. Uh. I need to kill that one real quick. Cause if they, I guess if they move. Compassion. Every time I finishes. Oh, nice. Uh, because I am guessing that, uh. Hmm. Okay, just took a bit. Can you move? Yes, you can. Nice. Agreed with. Did I not? My out of action? I guess I'm out of action. Uh. That's a discard. Okay. Okay, no, it's, it's pretty, it's a decent game. It just takes, takes a bit to get used to. Fifteen damage. What the fuck? What the, what is that doggy turn? That dog is a dragon. What the fuck? Uh, yep. Yep. Removing the blade. Hmm. Just now if I attack. Here we go. Here we go. Ooh, that's, it's, okay. Oh, that's a nice one. I like this, I like this stuff. I like it a lot. Orio's door. They never saw it coming, filthy mutt. And there goes the last one. You know what? I'm going to do that. Uh, Goberto Nowaned. You have all thanks. Any help, whoever small it is, is welcome in our noble endeavor. But it is I who feels honored to give an helping hand to our brave paladins. Sir Goberto, we must make haste, and we cannot swick our covert journey. Oh, he's going to join us? I guess. Cover Johnny by letting you spread this news, the news around. I'm going to do that. I could bring him along. Rollo, are we not babysitting such a dim-witted individual all the way to Orper? Okay, you're being a bit of a bitch right now. Um, that would also inform him of the reason of our presence here. There is no way we can bring him with us. Dammit. Oath of silence? Sir Pimp Brunel. Uh, I trust you can swear to Zitalik, Zitalk, that our crossing of Glauric Forest, uh, will be kept safe. Of course, I'll be quite as grave. I swear upon Ziltak and Azator. Good, sir. We shall trust your oath. You can go now. I am not sure I get it, but I'll see you next time, paladins. Okay. See you next time, paladins. Farewell! Wait, we cannot. What are you doing, Sir Alphonse? He swore upon Ziltak and Azator. How could he break such an oath? Oh, he's so cute. Hmm, sir, ale. The defeat is shall decide its fate now, sir. We can trust him. Well, let us not lose any more time in such trivial matters. Aka, oh, you poor soul. You poor summer child. What a goof. Truly, truly euphemism. Whoa, throwing shade. Throwing shade. Halt! Let us stray from the path that we set up camp. It would be safer. Is that true? The king and his son are sleeping on the bedding. The night shall become. How quaint it is to finally lie down. Not used to walk that much, my lady. The road is never ending and the hair stifling. Sir Alphonse, I noticed while we were fighting. Why don't you use your relic? Oh, that's a pogo. Pogo, pogo fucking hole, no, nice. I prefer not to use it. My blades are quite enough to protect his majesty. I see, I think. Now is the time, now is the time for questions, novices. We not have such luxury tomorrow as we must quickly depart. Hmm. Could you enlighten us on how you came to defend and tutor the prince, Sir Alphonse? Well, where to? Where to begin? When in, uh, Noamored, our young prince, older brother was born, the king was ecstatic. He cares only for this child, the one that was declared true heir of the great realm of Meodred. When Queen Medith was pregnant again, though, the king could not care less about the news, nor the child. She finally decided to find him a royal tutor on the sound advice of the Order of Ancestors. Aka, one was the. One went the heir, the other was the spare. Come on medieval history! I was the one chosen for such a task. My place as mentor of the paladins made me an excellent teacher for his majesty. I doubt it. The choice fails out nowadays. I see. Do you know our respective mentor, uh, mentors as well, Sir Alphonse? Do you know our respective mentors as well, Sir Alphonse? You tutored us with them, but I seldom saw you with Sir Gabriel. I regret, I must admit, ale. Your tutor was never one to strike a conversation with anyone outside the Order of Ancestors, aka he was kind of a cunt. I heard he's a wise man, and I never had to worry about you, aka still kind of a cunt. What about Yoav? Did you train him too? Indeed. He might be the one I spent the most time with because he wasn't such a cunt. He assisted me in overcoming a difficult part of my life. We were buddies, bros. I owed, I owed it to him with to ease his arrival into corpse. Even though I could not help with his personal matter, matters. Was he a shagger? I presume that Marian was your mentor? Ah, no! She joined the corpse years after me, you say. We are not exactly the youngest. She already knew how to fight when she arrived. And could easily compete with the most gifted paladins. I received messages. What the hell is here? Who there message me? No one, I guess, I don't know. What, what's happening? Oh. What? Ah, meh, I could do that. Oh, he's, oh, he's someone stupid. Okay! Um, so it's just I, I was distracted by discord. And she already knew how to fight when she arrived and could easily compete with the most gifted paladins. She was what we call a child. I have seen her shut down vicious mockery with a simple glimpse of her axe. Ooh, an axe wielding woman, my kind of woman. If you believe me. It must have been arduous to be the first Paladin woman with more than seven hundred years of service, seven, more than seven hundred years of service in the corpse. Though, especially after she lost all her legitimacy among Motherhouse Thulda. And time to read some backstories, cause I'm curious. And there is no art because it's a demo. Um, Eliza's mentor and mother of Niantis Thulda, once a peasant, she married Lord Brestel Thulda during the War of the Southlands. And ruled the Motherhouse after his death. A conspiracy led to a downfall and a replacement by Niantis as head of the family. King in Neptush II then made her the first woman to join the paladin corps. She wielded colossal relics, a Valgaros oar. Wait, I know that name, Valgaros. No, is it something similar with an axe? What's the name? Peruz? Or Perun? Axe? There is something, there is something, I think. Axe which can send up columns of magma to annihilate those who dare confront her. Yeah, if someone wielded volcano, I would be also pretty scared. A mother, oh, that's, that's, that's a terrask. That's actually a terrask. Um. Motherhouse Thulda is known for its belligerent temperament and aggressive claim to the throne of Meodred. They recently lost the war of the southern lands of civil war during them, during which they oppose King Neptush II. Uh, Thulda Motherhouse is currently led with a lion fist by Niantis Thulda, Gordon. Okay. Uh, Gordon Thulda, our weak-hearted half-brother and husband. Uh, uh, brother, uh. Brother, uh. I was aristocrats. Okay, it's fine, I guess. Half-brother and husband, ugh. A favorite scapegoat. Okay, so his husband in theory. Their motto is death before weakness. And their relic is the Helm of Valgaros. Okay. Next. Yoav! A Rollo's mentor, husband to the armor of Morgell, and father to their six children. Dude's been busy. Uh, Yoav wields, I mean, they've been busy. Uh, Yoav with two relics. Oh, my God! The sword and the counter he once found in, on the Almanac, Almanac, okay, that's a bit of a nose. On, on, on the legendary island of Almanac. As a farmer, it's a gigantic blade that can cut through any material and the later is, is later can control the weight of any object. However, using trolics to, takes a heavy toll on Yoav's mental health, much more than for any other Paladin, aka is a bit insane. Gabriel, his mentor raised as he was as at the Abbey of Lartsem. An enigmatic Paladin of few words inspires both respect and fear. In battle, he used Netra, a black ass knight weapon that lets him control gravity. That's a bit of a shit as well. Crosses targets or move, or move them as he pleases. And I know I use that too. Why is the prince accompanying us? Why is the prince accompanying us on this trip, sir? It won't be easy to carry out our quest with a kid in our hair. I have to admit, it surprised me too, but the king must have his reasons. Ooh, shiny shit. Uh, as he does from bringing Zorigalia with him. What? Uh, the king has brought a scepter with him? I did not notice. As well as maelstrom, okay. The sword gifted by, the sword gifted by House Thulda. I noticed he's put his hand over the scepter several times, despite his secrecy. End of blab, paladins. You all need. That's a typo. You all need to, you all need to sleep. Yes, that's a typo. I'm going to screenshot that. I mean, they probably already have that. They probably already have it, just in case. Zbeep. Zboop. Zbeep. Just in case. It's a demo. If I can help out, I'm going to help out. Okay. We have a lot of distance to cover tomorrow. We shall arrive in the village of Orper by dusk. You will need to tread carefully there. The trees will not be able to cover us anymore. I will take the first watch with my moustache. It, yes, sir. Level up. New skill unlocked. Okay. Want to continue? Uh, ooh, okay. Uh, Rollo, target alive plus two draw. Ooh, that's very useful. Yes. Uh, uh, yeah, yeah. No, just draw cards is always useful. What's that? Target and I like it. Ooh, yes. Wait, I need to look at it. Uh. Five damage. It's, ooh, yes. I need more buffy buff. Now we get more draw power. Ooh, this is like, this is like Mont Saint Michel. Wait a fucking minute. This is supposed to be like Mont Saint Michel? It's, ah. Go this way. Little. Yeah, that's the sound of. On your feet, paladins! We've got a lot of distance to cover to go to Orper. Hmm. Waking up. Waking up already. I couldn't sleep. I, I think I heard some wolves. Shut the fuck up, child. Get up, son. The fate of our realm shall not wait. What's that in my yellow eyes? What's that? A fruity tree stone arch. Let's start with the. I like stone archers. Encounter. She looks nice. Probably a murderer. I mean, she or he, I don't know. It's Griffith. He's back. Look, a group of bikus. Bicus dickus? Dude, biku what? Sir Rollo, have you truly never met any bikus? Bicus dickus? They are nomadic member of the Order of Ancestors. Okay. We should go and greet them. We in a hurry, ale. We must keep our journey secret. Traditions compel us to give them supplies in exchange for their prayers. Our fair kempo has wood likes this gesture, especially after taking so many lives in the last few days. Hmm, I don't give a shit. I will murder all the witches, hmm. Get a biku. What a biku. Rollo, forget about tradition at least today. But I'm curious about the lore. Hello, biku. We would like to offer you some supplies for your journey. Hey, Anzim, Anzim, uh, hasn't met Warden of the Woods bless you in this place. Lisagui. Lisagui. We shall pray for you and your fellowship. Who are your friends? Uh, hmm. You know what? It's his time. He's religious man. I'm going to let religious man be religious. We are a group of paladins who. Ale! Oh, paladins may, hasn't met protect you bearer of divine relics. We shall pray for you. You bring safety to this land, for that we are grateful. Farewell. You are very lucky she did not ask any more questions, Sir Ale. I'm sorry. I thought it was the right thing to do. Ah, sweet summer child. You already never left your monastery. Strawberry. Strawberry. We need a strawberry! It's, nay, it's okay. We have a knight with the strawberry. We have a knight to say nay now. Encounter. Ah, that's when the demo broke. Yet I don't even know what it looks like. Let's do it. Queen Vermesa, may your light get us forevermore. Thanks, ale. I heard this prayer many times, that it still inspires. What was that? That was close. We should check it. Uh, there goes the last one. Those defying us brigands dared to assail you and they paid it tenfold. Thank you, sir. Oh, you truly saved us now. My pleasure. Farewell, my friends. I must go walk the trail again. Farewell. Eliza, did we not meet that brave fellow on the way to Orper? Uh, yes, indeed it is. We were right to let him go. Let us get moving, sir. She doesn't like dumbasses. I can, I can, I can respect that. Uh, Orper. After a short journey or arrows, I have to Orper. Here it is, the fishing village of Orper. The Alderman, how Alderman. Okay, Alderman is for, um, okay, Alderman, okay. The Alderman. South must be close. I can see a large one further on. This must be it. Let's get moving. It's starting to rain. I don't want to get soaked. My beard is too fucking magnificent. burgomaster okay burgum uh burgum uh burgomaster um ah yes yes what do you what what's what's that you need alderman you know who we escort and why we do so open up oh yes yeah oh gosh come in I just only wood to the fire let's be drenched what is like likely too too quick um you have my gratitude master ersart for your warm welcome because there's a fire I'm funny your majesty can it be the king his majesty the king is in my house our time is limited the sooner we can get this matter behind us the better oh oh yes come uh all you need is what you need is in mine back room paladins wait here it shall not take long my lord I can't let you that is an older paladin I most insist sir must I remind you of your role your oath to you of all paladins oh my lord good your majesty follow me it's so much voice acting hey cabos um there it is um welcome cabos uh two hundred uh two thousand two hundred seventy seven welcome welcome again welcome to the welcome to the stream oh zandafel hello dude it's a raid welcome welcoming raiders what uh what were you doing here we go uh what were you doing I hope they good stream uh uh cabos was world building what exactly world building you say what kind of world building uh what kind of world building I'm also world building I mean I right now I'm playing a demo of a game that I wanted to play for a while uh but it's it's a rare occasion most of the time I'm working on my own tabletop RPG with my co-game designer Daka which maybe or maybe not in the chat I think it's still working so in and out uh yeah because it's not late enough yeah it would be very later when you join so yeah so most of the time I work on my own tabletop RPG but today of all days you find me doing something else which is rare didn't happen in month uh placing peoples into the world okay and figured out who they were so creating fictional ethnicities or just like specific people like specific like um whoa so but with okay it is the bot of the day the bot of the day has been banned uh creating families oh so bloodlines and houses and stuff like that okay nice very nice very very nice uh cabos is like you be if DM world building writing quest making so so forever DM for over another forever DM uh yeah so what kind of setting specifically like is it like fantasy what kind of stuff like what kind of setting specifically because I mean it's probably yours but you this general strand of stuff like right now I'm doing high fantasy for mind it's like high fantasy but also inspired by uh it's like bronze age somewhat I I may try to go back more towards that or maybe explore that in another no I'm going to yeah I don't know like it's complicated so yeah high fantasy medieval high fantasy or like any kind of other high fantasy because there is rune quest rune quest as well like your bronze age uh high fantasy as well so it depends there is a high fantasy is a wide so medieval or something else the fireplace exit of the house I do not like living the king alone this town should not be this quiet need to watch the surroundings I was eager to gaze upon the sea but it's too dark I guess fireplace medieval okay sir I still can't understand why the prince is accompanying us he's a little cunt yes he's a little he's a little asshole welcome and thank you for the follow cabos uh I'll I'll um I'll I'll okay I I failed I I'll answer I'll respond in kind um after the stream is done because I'm kind of curious I'm gonna watch your vault if you have one and an ad start is starting in thirty seconds of course ads choose the time when someone raids sometimes you know what I'm going to I'm going to snooze you I know always and feel free to pop in yeah 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 I'm always interested in more creators like more like tabletop RPG world builder uh there's a fair few amount of us in my discord um in the committee discords there's a fair amount of us and a new fair amount as well but it's just like tabletop RPG creator together strong because again it's like feeding it's like feeding a loop of creativity in my opinion so it's like maybe maybe if you watch me I mean maybe when we are done with the demo um I can show you some stuff and then afterward I mean if you don't have to bounce because you just ended stream you just ended stream so if you have to like do something else like because like eating or whatever like have some downtime after some I understand again I don't want to force you to stay here I must admit me either his majesty I've been keeping his youngest son close to him for at least for the last few days carv uh that's that is not like him he usually lets his brothers the great prince carv spoil and cater to him I can put you on the phone but no reason to change things on my account okay uh that is not like him is okay let's look at the character personae you have gabriel is it there yeah because there's medith which is most lucky heart because let's just be honest that's what it is uh junior brother of neptus two uncle of gallenmore I hate that name noah morret and ga- ga- because I want to say galahad galia had neptus close to the great mooring and grand counselor of the order of ancestors so he's priest uh where prince uh gallia oh my god gallia had to succeed his father carv who does him the regency I think galia had came of age and put us how many times I have to put his name okay it must be tough having to raise this child it is much more arduous than mentioning mentoring paladins if that is your question because he's a prince I can't really can really slap his ass I can only imagine especially since he's not your son I had a son once dark backstory fuck fucked up ten miles there oh did okay whoa 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 dude is straight up like oh you lost your son oh did I give me details paladin dot 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 question mark forgive me I was raised in lardstum abbey but never learned the ways of the world I would not have guessed I would have never guessed yeah I'm out of time wow what a surprise okay wait uh uh I must amend to say often the kid is too quiet it has been nice and it has been too great as it not let's do it a second time I don't know many times I I need to sir you seem lost in your thoughts oh um the child I wish he could find the love he needs with his father and mother such a young child needs more care from his parents I don't realize how lucky they are you seem to care a lot about prince sir of course he raised him he's lucky to have you thank you novice your words are truly what was that the king oh no that was sorry kilton I should have not left him alone I can do it god the backroom door it is locked sir rolo break that door down let me careful what no uh oh that's that's not good no his beard you villain uh oh pirus polis paladins no time to lose no time to lose catch the assassin he got too much of him in the way to care of the king and the prince I may have fucked up el eliza through there land dead take care of them careful paladins I never done so much voice acting in my entire life I mean I'm trying it's it's generous to create voice acting oh oh we surrounded nice that's a nice placement that is smeared it for artwork I love the artwork so much okay let's wait I get oh it's uh okay mm I need to move you there mm yeah what does diversity do diversity getting additional action oh um I need to kill that one first uh I need to kill that one first because it's going to be a problem uh because I want my healer to be good yes you is right oh fuck that's all I can do ah uh all allies and elisa's line m elisa's line and herself oh no that's bad who's there okay oh ooh okay ouch dude the animation is so fun who's I really don't like her is that guy dead he has poison right okay two two damage okay not enough um you yeah I need to do that then I'm going to do the armor I need to do the armor because she's out of armor what I seen reserve goddammit attack the guy then what was that what does do mm ah fudge move to the you because I need you I need you to kill that guy okay because then it's safer and we can we have a healer out of the way uh move this is uh okay I don't have a heal right now but damn it fuck you uh we have the one this is good I cannot do that um I can do that here ah I guess yeah ah because I really don't like her I really don't like her wow uh page then drive the heel yes I should have done that before that was that was a misplay uh di 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 uh you who I have um push it back on it addition target back one tide and seven damage friendship yes I'd rather do that then attack the guy I can do that uh uh you can do it nine armor on her I can't oh it's only oh it's only personal better than nothing uh shatter uh yeah that guy um bleed so he takes damage uh I yeah ah wow wow okay I guess I guess that's it oof oof okay she really eats shit every fight she eats shit dear lord I really love to target her um yes and here we go uh then uh di 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 yes she really eats shit at every fight but we win so whatever ah by oostus shadow that back she flees towards the piers paladin on the double pursuit don't to sight of the enemy what in the first time we catch up with the opponent within a limited amount of time oh inspect quickly so various occasions present by hovering over the cards you find your enemies you find your enemies one advantage direction by clicking the card okay be careful the cards are suddenly hidden and the certain cards and enemies take me cost your precious second oh I hate that uh eh eh uh eh uh uh eh eh fuck defeat oh my god am I supposed to win that the animation takes so long just sight of her she can't be far away look for around the pontoons she's there quickly so we have to do it again oh fuck and then and then okay so ish ish there there ish ish there there ish 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 there okay success okay nice that's nice that's a good mechanic for card game the cane wears a kingslayer reminds me of witcher the witcher too also we defeat we have to fight her now oof that's bad uh you go there she has the most armor yeah we have the assassin would let her escape paladins may azetor the azetos will be done but is it a I guess a religious thing uh do I have the dagger I do have the dagger uh do I have the vulnerability yes uh yeah uh an adjacent yeah I need to I need you to move forward anyway uh I don't think I can yeah I think that's it ooh oh fuck what the hell I don't have fancy animations I don't have fancy animations the ancestor get my blade she ain't fooling around we're gonna give all give it all to take her down uh you can also use ancestor your the ancestral sites of your skill cards it should get devastating effect about turning the tide of battle uh side of the skip fight is banned for the rest of the combat it does not join to discard pile you can no longer Uh, side of the skip fight is banned for the rest of the combat. It does not join to discard pile, it can no longer be drawn. Okay? Pagan has stressful face, raise the ancestral influence gauge, gauge of the quest for the paladins. This gauge is permanent and can be, and can be cleared at times during the adventure. Ancestral influence gauge, at three meters threshold. Reaching a new threshold, grant temporary power bonus to the paladin. Oh, why do we want it to be clear then? Clear them. Uh... Yep. Uh... Nema, 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 nema. Yes. You. Oh, uh, ba-ba-bo-bo. What should be the base damage that I do? But I want to... Can I move the camera a bit? Uh... Am I out of action? I guess I'm out of action. Uh, yeah. Hmm. Yes. Uh... I guess. Uh, I don't know what to do. Yes. Uh, yeah. I can't attack again. Dang it. Oof. My god, that's too much damage. Okay, uh... Uh... Uh, damn it. No. Wait, oh, I saw, I see the, okay. Uh... Okay. Ooh, that's nice. I wrath them to drown you in blood. I want the armor. I don't want her to die. And I need him to go forward. Uh... Ah, fuck. Uh... I just do that because I, I need damage. Uh, purge. Uh... No, what the... Eh! Yes. Uh, fuck! I'm just going all in. You don't have a choice. Uh, it's time to put in the ground those who stand before us. Uh... Psst, 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 eh, 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 eh. Uh, per-per-per. Uh, damn it. Okay, we are doing some damage. Uh... What? Oh, because I'm out of actions. Ah! Ah! Uh, fa-fa-fa-fa-fa-fa-fa-fa-fa-bow, bow. Can I do that? No, I can't. Damn it. Okay. It's quite, it's more challenging than I thought. Ooh, that's bad. I really need to kick her ass. Yeah, we do have the whip. Okay, we can win. Should I attack now? Okay. Damn. We got her. Phew! Game is more than we couldn't, I thought. Okay. Ancestors, your will is done. You, why did you kill the king? Where did you get from it? My part is done. She's dying. I do not think we'll be able to, okay? What? I do not think we'll be able to get any information from her. The heck? Okay. No, I can't join the Anzu. Wait. Is that the Anku? Is that where they do it? So be it. You do not deserve to death so swift, assassin. I wonder what could make her commit such a heinous crime? I'm worrying about something else right now. That girl had a relic. How? I thought only the royal family and paladins were to try to carry one. Members of the motherhouses too, and some nobles from minor houses. You are right, however. The fact that a simple cutthroat like her was using an illegal relic strength and worrying. All the divine relics are linked to Asetor's crown. The king must, must wear it to feel when a relic is used anywhere. The king left it at the palace as a precaution. We should requisition this relic and get back to the king urgently. We might still be able to do something. Sir Alphonse. What happened? What did the king fare? Hmm. Apologies, Paladin, but Neptus, the second son of Enc- Enclosium, the first king and lord protector of the realm, has, of the realm of Meodred, has died today. Dot, dot, dot. Were you able to apprehend the assassin? Yes, she died. What about the prince? With the alderman's wife, I kept, I kept him away. But his highness is uncourtable. He knows what happened. What kind of dagger is, is this you are holding, sir? I do not know. His majesty had it in hand, yet I have never witnessed such a weapon. It is shiny. Would you show it to me? Let me in! Come on! What's happening? You in my house? No, ma'am, you can't. Wives take me husband! Father! We are sorry. Prince come to... What have you done? Are you dumb bitch? What have you done to my husband and the king, you paladin monsters? We did not do it. You still got that murder, murder weapon in your hand, divine? There's the dagger of my husband, there's the dagger of my husband, you stole it! This dagger is a gift, a reward from his piety, cuss ye be! Madam, you're losing your mind. Don't start imagining things. You serve the Anzu with, with too much zeal. What? Where is she, where is she going? Probably to get help. I do not like this. He has a, will get you as a scepter and a blade and let us flee. Fortunately, we cannot prepare the remains of our king. We have to leave the body. That's terrible. Motherfucker, that's terrible! Now you all, oh my god! Oh my god, he's a dumb fuck! That's a terrible plan. We, we need to leave this village! Understood, sir. Where are we going? Why is the ladies, why is the ladies so angry with us? Well, because of the petition of right uprising a few years ago, buddy. The corpse was overzealous. Our people are still scarred by the massacre. Years, paladins! You old! As I have mercy. Commoners. We have to leave, since then let us pass. Think we let you go your merry way when you stab our alderman? Yeah, a good fellow he, he was, or I start, I start, whatever. In certain situation, if that's, if that's good, exceeds certain thresholds, they may lose. Oh no! Oh no! Oh no! Oh no! Um, so busy at work, I have no idea what I missed. Uh, we are accused of murder. Your entire village would die for your impudence. Oh, fuck no! Uh, because the dudes, because they get more pa, they pretty much get juiced up by their weapons. Let us scold them, paladins, that no one, let, what? No! Uh-oh. No! Oh, I'm killing peasants! Because his ancestr, his ancestral gauge is too high, so he's getting like, he's literally juiced up by his weapon. Oh no, I'm killing peasants. Oh no. Why am I killing peasants? Where's your power, you man? I'm killing peasants. I did not, the game sprang it on me! Like, oh, something may happen, and I'm like, okay, now you're murdering peasants, and they're like, what the fuck? I'm murdering peasants! I don't want to! Ah! Dammit! Fucking dammit! Love of god, goddammit! Ah! I don't want to! Do we have, does anyone has armor here? No, they don't. They don't. Uh, six HP, yeah. I don't wanna do that! I don't wanna do that! Fuck! Ah, some bullshitery! Ah, yeah! I, I should have... They literally threw, they literally threw pavement at me. Uh, dude is dead. I literally threw pavement at him. I'm literally, I'm literally beating down a protest. There's a lot of them. You bunch of bloody bitches! Get me everyone, let's kill them! I just did more of them! Yes, a peasant! It's almost like we only need like ten percent of the population and ninety percent of them are peasants. What do you mean? I'm like, oh, there's more of them! Oh my god. God, I want to do it! I wanna do it! Why do you make me do it? Ah, I guess that's a decision we make. A decision we make. Ah, don't wanna do it. Don't wanna do it. I guess that's, that's, that's actually a good choice. Dude, it's been the worst of these games that actually made me, actually made people like, like difficult choices. I, I agree with that. I agree with that. What? He threw fish at me and I'm poisoned? Ah! That guy, is he the rebel warrior? Oh, that's why they are annoying, okay. Those dudes actually motivate people, okay. Oh my god, I'm getting killed by pavement. Uh, f... Ah, my guy, my dude, bro. Why do we have to do it? Why do we have to do it? I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. Ah! I don't wanna kill them. But they don't leave me a choice. They don't leave me a choice. Why don't you leave me a choice? I would love to have a choice, but I can't because I did a stupid. I should have read it more. I should have read that stuff more. I didn't, and now they're dead. And now they're bloody dead. The Beva regret song of I kid peasant that I didn't want to. Stop throwing fish at me! Bloody peasant! Okay, I need, oof. Ouch! Okay, do we have a heal? Yes. I need that, and I need your dagger into his face. Is he doing too much damage? Here we go, smack. Uh, what do you have? And here we go. I sure love killing the peasantry. It's, it's amazing. I sure love it. Oh my god. They... They're literally just peasants. I don't want to, why, why do you make me do it? Okay. Bloody peasant, what do... Bloody peasant. Uh, yeah. I do have more hi... Uh... Please, 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 no, I need to move. Uh... Oh! There's only one dude left. I... So that's, that's, that's not a very good showing, just because I let the dude go crazy with power, literally. I let him, I let him, I let him down the, the magic steroids, and I should not do it. I should not have done it. Yeah. Heal yourself a bit. I'm trying to like heal as much as I can. A nine armor, yeah, because I'm going to move him and try to slap the guy. Uh, what else? That's all I can do, I think. Yeah, that's all I can do. Select that guy, move there. I... Hmm... Do you have something if it doesn't win in me? Yeah, win marks and points. Can you do it again? Uh, target an adjacent character, no. Let's beat. Looks like I can move her a bit. I can move her there. I target an adjacent, are you adjacent? Not adjacent. Okay, no. Uh... But I guess today we are killing innocents. That's... No, that's why you need to read the text. That's why you need to read the text. Uh... That's why you better read the dialogue, because you're gonna fuck up. Yeah, I need to throw that coffee out. I think the, the milk is, the milk was not. You understand the cost of standing in the way of the paladin corpse? So much death. The protection of the prams is paramount, ale. Their hate was too much. Even if, even if time had been an offside, it would have been impossible to convince them. I'd love to share your certainties, sir. Let us get back to Glaurak Forest to safety. Let us get back to Glorak Forest to safety. We need to talk, the situation is dire. We should be safe now. Paladins, the king is dead and we were responsible for his safety. As paladins, our honor code demands that such failure be punished by death. But you can't die, I'm going to die too! Of course not, young prince, you can't, not, not a Paladin. But you can help us. Our duty compels us to bring Zorigaliah to the royal palace of four ja- a giant. Uh-huh, and so a new king can be crowned. If we are to carry out this quest and the prince was to plead for us, mayhap we be pardoned? Also need to learn how anyone could learn about whereabouts. Our wedi side was no, was no rookie. She was experienced and well informed. There was a leak. And we find the source. We find the source, if we find the source, we could have another defense to plead for our life before the realm. I do not want you to pay for my mistakes, paladins, and you can still enjoy your better years. Hey, hey, you bet my leaves they'll pay. Go there! It's only, oh, it's a narrator. It's only I. But I may be something or maybe not, who knows? Who are you? Oh my god, Sussman, the man of Suss. Apart only a simple minstrel singer instrument that is composer dancer and eve- even a, even a high roller that I had, collector and storyteller, a buffoon in a clown boot. And sometimes, and I don't, I had on a fortune teller's shawl. AKA small jobs, the guy. Live now, my sword and core thirsts. Oh, forever lashing, arrowing, heart ending, outrending Elisa. Oh, do thou know my name, of my name? There isn't, there isn't the question, sweet Paladin, a better one is this. What's in on thy, what's, what's it on thy belt? The dagger, the one from the side of King Leflet's remains? Not any dagger, Paladin. This one, her too, could be very use, could very soon destroy your evil, if, if world. Shattering those objects of power you keep unto your heart. Alack, power! Enough with the source of war. Your poor souls already understand that better than anyone. Are you insinuating it could vanish relic, vanquish relics? How? But I hope you make a voice to say so, you sage of it. Whatever your decision may be, you're pleasing a spectacle we shall see. Shogorath, is that you? Wait, how? He vanished! Destroying relics? The very idea, theoretical! The divine relics are sacred artifacts. Aye. So when I tried on that murderous relic, does it look all that powerful, methinks? Hmm. That bard's words are intriguing, I must admit. But that would be sacrilege! It would bring down upon us the wrath of Azator. Your fears are legitimate, Ael. However, I wonder if that dagger had anything to do with the king's coming to our purr. If it can destroy relics, it's likely the ass come here for it. Let's make sure of that. What, I... I, okay, I cannot, I can only do that. Uh, okay. It actually does it? What the fuck? Wait, is there a demon in, oh! Oh, just for breaking the first goal of all paladins. Oh, that's what you do it. Just for his trick, as a mission abomination, which was no face and it looks tough. Careful, because when you feed ancestral gauge to its maximum, your paladins fall under the ancestral holder. Yeah, I just seen it! Your paladins' ancestral influence can never fall below the ancestral road level. However, we'll be given a few parties to lower this value of the course of the adventure. That's... Okay, who has the most health? You, I need you to swap there. S- yeah. Unused door! Did you see what came out of the relic? It's, we... May Azator protect us. Should have not trusted that bard. Can I even poison it? But, each times the character inflicts damage on its targets, like, ooh. Oh nooo. Uh, yeah, bro. Yeah, bro. Yeah, bro. Uh. Okay, so I can move there. Uh. You have no ability. Oh, bra. Shit be not good, bra. Shit be not good, bra. Uh, yeah. Uh, shit be not good, bra. Twenty, ooh, fuck! Oh. Flogemogen. Uh. Oh, fuck, uh. Oh, no. Yeah. Oh, flogemogen. Uh, ooh. Oh, it's beard. Yeah! Uh. Yes. Yeah! Uh. Eight to five. Yeah! Okay, shit be bad. Ah! Ah! My boy is hurting, he's hurting pretty bad. Uh, oh, it's him, um, you know what, it's still a good idea. Oh, plus zero, what the fuck? What? Yeah, poison. Uh. What do I do then? Uh, untouchable. We need to tank damage at the moment. Yeah! Then you bleed. Yeah! Uh, more bleed. Yeah! Because if I can not use... If I, if I can not, um... I cannot do that. Six HP, please. Uh, to her, because she has no armor. It's just a zero, oh my god. Whatever. He hasn't touchable, uh, because he cannot fall to zero, that's what. Okay, let's... End it. And we have generated, we have, normally we have generated no, no ancestral gauge, because if I, if I can win without using it, I'm going to do it. Yeah, what was that saying? I, I do not know. Dot, dot, dot. It might be a manifestation of the power imbued in the relic. Have we killed one of the ancestors? Lysa! Not say such things, please! There must be an explanation. They're demon weapons. If those are ancestors and all the statues are wrong, I, I, hmm. We have more urgent matters. The king's death shall soon be known over the realm, we must hurry, before it reaches the capital. It will plunge our realm into turmoil. What do you mean? The king's succession was already a very divisive matter. Yes, a real abundance of problems shall come with it. Please enlighten me, I do not understand, I am an innocent little man. Everything points to, to, at, uh, Noam Morad, the firstborn son of the royal family being crowned. But many nobles of the regal, at, at the regal court believe him to be Queen Medith's bastard son. They do not acknowledge his lineage, they will judge him unfit to wear the crown. And with now, uh, Noam Morad ousted from the throne, it will fall to his highness here to be crowned new king of the great realm of Meodred. He is the king, but I'm not ready yet. Your uncle Calv shall assure the regency. It would, oof, yeah, ooh, I think the milk was bad. I would stake my life that he awaits such news with anticipation. Lord Calv, I met him several times at, at, at Lartsem Abbey. He's a man of indomitable faith and holds this position of greater, as great advisor of the order wonderfully. Only the great mooring faith overshadow his. Sounds like a dumb mess of all, of all those people. Hmm. Ah, can I do all of them? What kind of horror came out of that relic? How could the blessing of Azator, old father, give birth to such monstrosity? I cannot wrap my head around it either, Ael, and I cannot say I like that. Something else tugs at me. My mind, it feels. Clearer now that we destroyed it. Did you feel it too? Yes, I thought that was just me. I remember that from when I killed the Jozmung with my anchor. I felt the same thing. Oh, it's Eldritch Bullshit! The three of us. Could it be Azator approving of our actions? I hope it is. In any case, we must learn more about the subject. Can I, oh. We had a lot to process in just one day. Getting the rest we need, good, good rest we need will be difficult. Took the words right off of my mouth, Ael. Keep your composure, Paladin. Keeping your cool in any situation is a Paladin's duty. You have a theory and practice, right? The path, the path to the palace with the prince and Regaliah will be arduous, that I can assure you. Sir Alphonse is not great at comforting. Aye, he isn't, but he's right. The coming days will be real tough. I trust this group, we can overcome anything, we have the power of anime on our side. Because the power of Franco-Belgian cartoons is not that good. Because we don't... No, it's, was, yeah. These days do not seem so overwhelming when we face them together. That's good to hear, Ael. Mention the strange bard, we need to talk about the masked guy first. How to get there, what did you know about the dagger and all? A mystery, I'm afraid. Ever known the relic bearer? Could have seen through, through walls or something like that? I do not know, Rollo. I am as cruel as you are on that subject. I noticed a strange gleamer on his mask's right eye. And pretty sure that's just another nut job spying on us. Maybe. But I love, oh. I don't get you say a woman in armor is, hmm, pristine. Pristine. Ah. What the hell, who is, who is, who is bugging me? Uh, okay, that's more stuff, okay. Keep discussing the consequences of the king's assassination. We have to correctly assess all the conflicts the king's death recreates in the great realm. Uh, Galiahad, now, uh, Noam Morad and Calv are not the only one in the race. Galeno and Avrok are also heirs of our king. That's share more people and to share more people, isn't more people, it's more people. Uh, Avrok. He'll desperately admit si- son of King Neptus II, he seems to be a bold bastard. Who me despises, and of a serving girl, half brother to Gannon Morad, Noam Morad, and Galiahad Neptus, during the war of the southern lands as Avrok was fifteen years old. His father sent him to the front lines, he never returned to court since, and roamed the kingdom instead. His father recently betrothed him to Celeste Ilios, without his consent. Yeah, that sounds pretty shitty, not gonna lie. Um, princess of Meodred, daughter of King Neptus II and Queen Medith. Elder sister of Noam Morad and Ga- uh, Galiahad Neptus. Although women do not have the right to claim the throne according to Meodred's law, many nobles consider her to be a more legitimate heiress than Prince Noam Morad. Politics with orders beat tradition. That is a lesson, that is, because tradition does... Miracle Good Morning. Uh. A supreme leader of the order of ancestral goes to the, to the Grand Consulor, Calv Neptus. As a consequence of his birth, I know many believe him to be a direct envoy of the ancestors, that sounds like bullshit to me. Uh, can wear assassin in charge of money, okay, that's, that's not much. Is there anything new? I, I don't want to read all of that. Uh, I'm more interested in the characters. Okay. Galeno and Avrok are also heirs of our king. Avrok? Is he not a bastard? Yes, but he is also the firstborn son of the king. He could try to legitimate his claim of the, to the crown. Especially since part of the people like him, as the, as the rumors would say. I see, but what about Galeno? Women cannot inherit according to our laws. And they could not become paladins in theory. Smug, smut, smug, but valid point, very valid point. Galeno has the favor of the nobility. Why do you look at this, why, why, why like that? Why like that? I'm guessing she's, she also is pretty partial to her. Many people could support her, I reckon. Does that mean they are devoting themselves to her as much as they do to Verme- as they do Vermesa? Ael, they will make Galeno a saint if that gets them what they want. Why is she so based? Why is she so based? Not a smartass lady, she's very based. I mean, she's a noble that is really fucked up because she understands the politics, so yes. But she's very well written. I'm pretty sure she's got the smarts to be queen. The charisma too, AKA, hmm, pretty. This is all too complex, yeah, you just got out of the monastery, dude, politics is quite the mess. Indeed it is, paladins. Galeno. Our journey to for- yes, the dude is, is the dude is horny. Our journey to Fort Giant shall not be smooth, novices, that I can guarantee. We should rest before undertaking the journey to the capital tomorrow. We need to outrun the news of the king's assassination. The news shall, the news shall have a harder time reaching my, um, my Zoom Castle, yeah, definitely, that's... Rhetoric much? Rhetoric much? Know that most people, and it's not a criticism, that's just, it's, it's weird to see. It's very weird to see because it's not used often. That knows that most people in our purr are dead. Sir Aliza, take the first watch. Yes, sir. Chapter completed, opera village. Level up. Wait, do I need to click it to, no, okay, it works for all of them, I'm good, exactly. It's, it's weird because she's, she's much more like, how do I say that, she's much more stronger built than the, than that guy. It's funny. Use skill, don't look, we need more damage. Yes. With that, recover six armor, with that one. Swell, what swell? It shakes the characters that started, okay, it's fifteen damage to every character. We need damage. We need more damage. With that, it is three damage in front of her, then move back one time, okay, so she's more like a rogue. I pack six drain. Recover one dash power for advantage. Yes. But she needs to survive more. I would that, uh, gain nine armor, that's the one we got. The two damage to, to, on adjacent targets, the target is affected by any, takes seven damage instead, okay. Uh, all that, ooh. That could be very good. And please, but, you know what, I'm going to go the burn one. We need, we need, we, we need more damage dealing. You try demos, there's a lot to do. That's if you two hour, oh, okay, that's what I was, that, okay, that's what I thought, I was just like, wait, that's a lot. I'm already wishlisting it. That was pretty nice, that was very nice actually. I liked that, I'm probably going to buy it. Probably going to buy it, to be honest, because I really like that game. Uh, and also it's, it's an excuse. That ' s if you two hours. Oh, okay. That ' s what I was. That. Okay. That ' s what I thought. I was just like, wait, that ' s a lot. I ' m already wish listing it. That was pretty nice. That was very nice actually. I liked that. I probably going to buy it. Probably going to buy it, to be honest, because I really like that game. Uh, I know it ' s it ' s an excuse for me to French rap. To like this is for me to use my accent. Uh, so I ' m going to do it. I was hesitating of getting like a knightly model for the void version, and I ' m probably going to do it honestly. Because come on. I have to. So, n- n- now let us continue. At this time it shall be. Uh, for actually, it will be Tabataba Piditem. Gonna work, back to working. So the real question becomes, uh, do I work on besties? Or do I work on? Because Dakar needs besties. And he has been harping on that today. And he cannot say he did not harp on it. He literally like spam messages on me. As I was trying to prep. So I have the right to bitch on that case. Let ' s restart the music that is not. Actually, I could. Maybe I could get medieval music. Um, I don ' t know whatever. Okay. So. Eh, dum 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 ba dum dum ba dum. Ah, oh wah. Okay. So should we go B T? Should we go? I don ' t know. I don ' t know. I got stomped. I can ' t repeat that. It opens true. Um. Eh. The. Uh dragon stuff. Yay. Now. Uh, what should I do? Should I settings untaken lands best cherry? Okay, let ' s pull up the biomes. Because that ' s that ' s in its order. 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 Uh, generate land generators. Is that one? It is that one. Okay. Bloody fucking egg, bruh. Okay, bruder. It ' s coming. It ' s ghost. I don ' t govern the host. Okay. A bit what? Give it. Uh, list. Uh, forest. So. Interesting mob that lives in forests. But first we ' ll be flying stuff, in my opinion. So those will not be draconic straight up. Uh, best cherry or like minor minor like stuff. Best cherry by biome. Attack, attack, cash, go, impact. Carton, take, go. Has it been shared? It has been shared. Nice. Uh, best cherry by biome. So new file. Time to organize everything. New folder, forest. Na 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 bow 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 bow. Uh, forest. Then we have what? Plains. A plant. I don ' t know. I ' m in a weird. I ' m like half tired, half not tired. So I ' m just like, I ' m in a weird fucking mood. I ' ve been in a weird mood for three days. I ' ve been trying. That ' s all dressed in black. Uh plains. Hot desert. That desert is a hotch. Oh no, I ' m dying. Um, dude, I wonder, dude, I have an idea. Is there, I mean, there is elemental V two birds, right? But is there any biome V two birds? That be kind of funny. Be kind of funny. Biome like, I ' m an oasis, bitch. That be kind of funny. Uh, I guess the same with elements. I guess. I don ' t know. Hee hee. Where is that race? Oh my God. Tiger step. Because Dakar lacks creativity. He he needs he I mean, as as far as we talked about, he ' s more of a visual kind of guy. So he actually needs like a picture or some shit and I ' m like completely the opposite. It ' s kind of funny. Because some people like they need a picture to start create stuff. I ' m literally the opposite. I could do it without any weapon. Like I ' m just, I just think about it and then it becomes something and then I put it on paper. Or improvise. I don ' t know. Let ' s guess. I don ' t know. It ' s it ' s kind of it ' s really funny. It ' s I mean funny. It ' s very interesting. It ' s interesting because you have like different. Yeah, very different. Um ways of thinking about stuff. And it ' s the same stuff, you know, it ' s the same thing. It ' s just like, there ' s different ways of doing it. I don ' t know. It ' s interesting. Because I wonder how the brain actually goes, you know. And it ' s moving. On the way. Dude, okay, that song is literally like, it ' s really beef beef uh beef like my new model of the song pretty much. Is this my new model of the song? So I went to put that one louder. And I ' m and just keep creating shit. So it ' s good. Get up. Get up. Wake up. Bottom to the top. The tongue for the fear. The real deal. Uh, June ' s. I guess June is more like an in between biome. I guess who got this? No compromise. Yeah, that ' s literally. Yeah, that ' s literally. Uh, that ' s literally beef, the song. Because I I have tendencies to be like that, but beef is even worse as a character because he doesn ' t have, because he literally doesn ' t have to like negotiate with anyone. If he wants something, he ' s going to fucking do it. Deal with that. Cat, when you when you. I ' m not an egomaniac. That ' s the one difference. Uh, I ' m quite the opposite, I think. I ' m more like neurotic, so. Up on my eyes. Go, go, go. Cause time to rise. As I go, guys. Messes. That one could just become the new the new because that biometer is going to be for every land. I guess we could move it out after you ' re done. We are done. I mean, I do have beasties already. Wait. 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 That ' s way easier. That ' s way easier. I mean. I don ' t know. Maybe it ' s me overthinking it, but hmm. Huh. Do 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 do. Uh, taples. Maybe it ' s me overthinking it. But dividing it that way may be easier for us. Huh, I may be a genius for doing it. And I ' m going to lower the volume again. Use that this song every time I think like he has a C G B of like doing shit. Like no compromise. Uh, taples. Da 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 da. So hope uh people hope you ' re having a pleasant day. Sorry for switching up things on you and playing a game instead of doing tabletop RPG stuff. But honestly, I just wanted to do it and I did. Hope the game was fun. Hope the voice acting was not too. It ' s voice acting I say that, but me like voice like voiceovering was not too much of a piece of shit performance. Introduce you to the. You have to. Beta. Car car venus. Car venus. Um. Jungle. Jungle. Uh, uh jungle savanna. Do what you gonna do? Gonna do? Demons come from you. Savannah. There ' s I think there ' s a there ' s a town. I think there ' s there ' s a town in the US named Savannah or multiple ones actually. Is that true? I think it ' s just sort of like a first name, Savannah. I was like, why would you name? It ' s like naming your son Plane. Hello, Plane. Why, Dad? I don ' t know. It ' s weird. It ' s weird. I guess it used to have like, some people named after jobs. So it ' s. It ' s not as weird. Uh, I mean in Anglo, not as weird, I guess. How can I do life? Um. Height. A gorge. Let her yours more gorge. I never know. You ' re a big camera prisoner. Okay. So again, hope you all have a good time. I hope some people are still watching. Uh, do I check? Do I do the demon? You know, it ' s time for me to suffer, I guess. I ' m curious because I ' m curious about the metrics of it. Is anyone still watching? Hey. Because anyone you check, because again, it ' s more like anytime you switch up the program, it ' s more like anytime you switch up the program or like you change what you ' re supposed to do or like you just like play a game instead of doing something else, people fuck off. So it ' s some I was curious about what would be the impact of it. Interesting. And hello cabos. Hello. Uh, hello cabos. No, not hello. But you know, welcome back, I guess, or not welcome back. I don ' t know, whatever. I ' m trying to say like, hey. Hey, I guess. Oh my god. That was a mess and a half. Um, what do we have? Bubble planes. Uh, those should be. Yeah, you must get picky, but still around. Yeah, yeah. It ' s just, I was just, I was just like, um, it ' s, you know, that ' s why there is an expression in English, I think is very right, which is like creatures of habit. Dude, as soon as you change the program or the habits, people are like, uh, as they move away. You know, despite the fact, you know, people still say like, um, no matter, like people still say like it ' s not about, it ' s about the streamer, not the program. They ' re wrong. It ' s both. It ' s both. Because if you change. So it ' s because it ' s. When you don ' t do the same shit, people don ' t stay around unless you like, because even for big streamers, like they don ' t. Like if you if you ' re like a bigger streamer, you can ' t like you don ' t see it as much. You still see it, but not as much. Uh, because to because to, oh fuck, I did it twice. Uh, because to to like smaller streamers, it ' s literally like, um, you know, it ' s half of a chat gone. You know. So we to to us, it ' s it ' s always like drastic or dramatic because it ' s like half of the attendance, so then he fucked off. Um, but for bigger streamers, I can afford to do that. Because they have like a way more audience, so they can afford to like to maybe have like ten percent, like ten to twenty percent. I don ' t know. I think like random. I should have stopped moving that. Uh, because they can afford to lose, you know, if they lose that much audience, to them it ' s not much. Like to us, it ' s to us, it ' s way more. That ' s why you often have, um. Let ' s give it a talk. You know what? I ' m going to change my shit. I mean, just chatting. It changed nothing. I ' m going to go back to tabletop RPG. Because it changed nothing. I tried. The test has been done. That ' s a news. Go, they ' ve come. You turn up a fool. Uh, then it ' s lake lake. If I shall accroach, it is my style, si tu t ' approches. So, toujours présente, la santé ne couvait d ' ergan. Have. Um, yes, this is French rap technically. It ' s like, beat down Arco is a name and I ' m like, they keep inventing names. And I ' m like, I just like it. I don ' t care. I love just the drop. It ' s literally just fuck. He wanted a puta. Mm, 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 mm. Uh, spooky forest. Ooh, spooky. Uh, I don ' t know. I guess I lost Daga. I guess Daga is not here today. He ' s like, fuck that man. That that man that might that man told me to shut up earlier. No, Daga was there in the chat, so I ' m just talking shit. Just yeah. I ' m not going to say the last word because that ' s stupid. That ' s actual French rap or hip hop. I fixed it now. The the funniest shit that that guy is better than a lot of the very famous rappers that were in France right now. Fuck, it ' s annoying me. Okay, fuck this. You ' re getting bigger whenever you dead center. Yes, okay. Phoenix. Yeah, it ' s literally about accent, say, I ' m shit. It ' s literally like nerd rap. Be there. Literally like guided by the dead. Literally one of the lyrics. It just. Um, okay, so now all of the files have been made. It ' s a lot of files. That one. Probably elementals. Arc and spoiled is only has only one kind. Yes, one kind of beasts which are the devourers. Uh, devourers and avengers as a two. I ' m still. And to say after the disaster. Uh, well, uh, no, it ' s not a dog. No, 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 no. It ' s not a dog. It is to be a sheep. Thank you babe. That ' s what I was thinking. Metal Arco, that not those people. There ' s an anti- osz genera, which is literally motivational. They ' re aid breed and stuff like that. It ' s literally all motivational metal. I don ' t know. To run out of. Hmm, go, and then... Keepers is better. A keeper arrive to literally kill Devourers if there's too many of them. He is, he is sad. Uh. I guess in Arctic. Up seals. Uh. I'm literally throwing out ideas. Because that guy, the guy has issues starting from nothing, so I'm just, I'm just throwing... I'm going to go bleh, and throwing whatever is on my brain on it. What is Arctic stuff? Whales? I don't know. Where is that message? Where is the message? And I'm like, eh, fuck off, I do what I want. Whales? Does that make sense, right? Uh, what could be, hmm... Stop, stop, I stop. Um, hmm, what is a fucked up cryptid from Japan? Like a Ningen? Cryptid? Oh, but the wall allow. Hahaha! Uh, sorry. Yeah, that's a Ningen's, right? And back, now whales. I mean, they're now wolves, which are the same. Yeah, we could do Ningen. Weird fucked up shit. Yeah, we could do like a Ningen. Oh my god, that took so cursed. Um, yeah, let's do that. I like cursed shit. Ningen cryptid? Um, and again, those are not dragons. Dragons are specific kind of best area. Uh, because specific, it has to be specific. An Ningen cryptid seals whales, um... Uh... Ooh, eh... Uh... Uh... Ah, bam, blah blah. Uh, what the fuck? Uh... A good Arctic shit. Um... No, no fucked up thing. Arctic land crabs. And you're muted. If you want to talk, you're muted right now. I'm seeing a little microphone muted. So that's Daca, that's my cool game designer. Um... If you're talking, you're muted, 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 Daca muted. Just in case. Just in case. I mean, I guess he's at his job, so probably why. I don't know why he's here though, if he's muted. Uh... I don't know why. A good? Is there a problem? I cannot... Okay. Okay, I guess it's just, because I cannot see the VC dude. If you're gonna talk, talk in the chat, because that's way easier for me to manage. Uh, talk in the chat if you can, because I'm, I'm keeping an eye on that, not on the VC of the Discord. Oh, good riff. Uh, yeah, that one should be the Arctic land crabs. Okay, so where are we monster wise? Uh, not much, because I played the demo, the demo. And the demo took me two hours. Which is pretty decent for a demo, actually. More than pretty decent, hmm. So the prologue is two hours, wow. I, I'm just throwing ideas. I'm just throwing ideas into the pot, right now. Hmm... Not dragons. Not dragons. Those are beasts that are not dragons, okay? Because dragons are specific. And again, as I said... As I said... If you want to make a dragon, use the template. You could just use the template and do that shit. That's, that's the way we do dragons. Uh, that's the way we do dragons. The, what I'm doing is the rest of the best area. If you want to, if you want to do narwhal drakes, put them in dragons in the drake category. The immortal, um... Because they don't do the same shit, and I don't want to mix them up. It's right. And again, just because it's a land dominated by draconic beings, doesn't mean that there's no wildlife. All together. Because they need to prey on something. Yes. Over. Uh... And why, why do you have a problem with it then? I don't get it. I guess it's a case of logic. I mean, why is it so difficult? I mean, I just, I'm just going to put it down then. Uh... Yeah, but drakes, okay. Drakes are flying. Like narwhals depend on the water. Okay. Yeah, but the problem is that dr- drakes would not work. Wharves maybe? Now what? Now you wa- now, now wha- now wha- now, wait, wait. Okay, I'm begging out, but... You know what? Now we've earned. Now we've earned. Here we go. Yeah, you go, you got to now we've earned, and that nice. Uh, wait. Uh... Oh, fuck. Ah! Okay, it did, did you finally update? You did, good. Now we've earned... Uh, could do less, um... I mean dude, it just, doesn't need to be imaginative as fuck, like... Yeah, that's what I, that's literally what I wrote down. That's what I wrote down. I guess you can't see shit? I ge- can you see shit or can you not see shit? Because if you, if you don't see shit, then I, I will get less annoyed. Because it wou- it would actually make sense. Uh... Without moss swing. Yeah, let's do that. Because if you can't see shit, it makes sense that you'd ask those questions. So, I guess you don't see shit? I guess you can't see shit? Uh... Uh, so... Okay. Because you asked for, the screen is very tiny, okay, so you can't see shit? So you asked for dragons, I came back to dragons, okay? So now I'm working on dragons because you asked for it. Because you asked for more, so I'm going to throw more ideas. Uh, moss swing, now I've earned. Uh... What else? Uh, moss swing now I've earned. You know, shimmer wing? Yeah, like something, yeah. Uh, shimmer wing. Uh, we can get a whoop, whoop? Get a whoop, whoop? Um... No dude! It's too late, I told you, that's what I'm doing right now! It's too late. I already d- I'm already doing it. I'm already doing it! You, you already do it, like, I know there's delay, but like, you're like, at least five minutes too late for that. No, ten, maybe ten? Whatever. I'm working on dragons now. Both of them are needed, whatever. As long as we make shit, I'm happy. As long as we make shit, it's fine. Because both are needed, so, nah. Uh, na 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 na, shimmer wing. Should we? Uh, yeah, we should. Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I'm literally giving you concepts. I'm lit- like moss swing is literally like, you know, like a carpet, like a moss carpet? Imagine a carpet moss as an ambush predator and a dr- and a waven. So instead of flying, it really uses the wings. You know? And now I've earned, uh, uses the, uh, rostre, like the, the horn, to literally like do echolocation instead. So it's literally like, maybe a blind waven would be fine, because, you know, there's a lot of snowstorms. You'd ask for a lot of stuff. What, dude, I'm doing... Okay, fine. Uh... Drake ideas. No, not Drake actually, Waven. Because Drake are too strong. At the moment. Um... Fuck! Let me write, damn you! Moss swing. Uh, is covered... In a... In a layer. In a... Moss. In a carpet of moss. In a carpate, in a carpet. Sorry. Out whoop. Okay, I'm getting... Okay, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing something else now. I'm doing, uh... Let's just, should I be killed? Should I be killed is good for vibes. Da da, I don't rate, and another beard. Uh, is covered in a carpet of moss that it's, that it uses... To stalk prey. Uh, surprise. Attack, um... Attack them in close range. Uh... Should... Should... Have a grab, maybe poison. Venom. It's your sneers when you're going down. It over to the sun. You don't raise your ground. Suffering egg, that he does just suffer an egg. Uh, moss swing now I've earned. Um... Is blind. Uses the horn. Which is actually not a horn. Uh, you, it's more tooth, kinda. Ah! Da 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 da. Ow! Let me eat the juice. That's a good one. Ooh! It's been fun, thank you for the stream. I have to head out. Okay, have a good day, man! And thank you again for the raid! Ah, yeah. It's, uh, 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 yeah. Okay, I... Okay, so I need to do that, now a salamander ID file. Uh, yes. Salmander ideas. I guess that's a good, that's a good idea for the Google Doc, yeah. Uh... Sticky tail. Let me, eh! Eh, okay. So it feels, yes. Uh, right now, I guess it's no longer, we no longer in biomes, because it's drakes, it's drakes. So, I guess I, we need to add like biome to the fish. Sticky tail. Sticky tail bug muncher. Uh, sticky tail bug muncher. I guess that's literally the entire concept, I don't need to add more. Uh, sticky tail bug muncher, now let's go back to wharves. Uh... Sound to locate... Prey and, uh... Or and, and the, the... Water... Is amphibious. Uh... Can use its, oh that's fun, its horn, to destroy... To crack ice. To crack as, as it plunges... As it plunges or to impale... Or intel... Prey as it swoops... In for the kill. That's nice, I like that. Back down. Now to the ground. Abadam, yeah. Does vitality? Does he, eh? Uh, moss with shimmering. Now, what is, what's there? Let's make a weaker one. Look for anything aside for hydralan, turn to salamander. Um, okay, that's... One thing at a time. One of the weakest... Kind of waven. It uses its, um... Its, uh, white... White bluish... Lights. One, two, three, and then the light. And in a wow, 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 wow. Uh... It's quite light bluish, um... Shimmery scale... As camouflage... As it, um... Fly high up... To prey on smaller flying... Targets and hides in plain sight from, through a... Uh, bigger... Uh, predators. To use from your beginning, a big a day. Beginning, a big a day. You know who would do that? A lindworm. A lindworm would do that. The beginning, the beginning, of the beginning, a big a day. Lindworms, I think she's, yeah. Generic lindworm. Inside and buried underground. Oh, so not a dragon you would fight directly, but a form of Ramora dragon would be pretty weak. On the main dragon you are fighting over, you'd be best as a salamander, yeah. What do you call that? Like, um... Clean- cleansing dragons? Or like cleanser dragons? Like cleanse, cleanser salamanders? Yeah, crony! You know, crony salamander, like cronies. Like, ye, ye, do it, ye! And that all the salamanders hate, because they literally cozy up. They actually cozy up to like other dragons instead of like being, yes, it could be like little bastards. Fuck! Mind control, hypnosis. A lindworm. A psionic lindworm. Never to assault. Oh, oh! I have one. I think it's also in Monster Hunter, but I'm not sure. And tyrants, ideas. Hammerhead. Um... A hammerhead slammer tyrant. Okay, yeah. Uh... A t- t-rex with a hammer for a head. By the way, Dakar, have you seen the Monster Hunter channel? There's been a bit of a change in time zones. So you should look it up in case, um, in case it fucks up with your planning. Uh, you should look it up. Uh, hammerhead slammer, tyrant, uh, AK T-Rex with a hammer for a head. Uh, can be in stone and have, uh, oars as horns. It just, it just because, uh, Hons also asked. Hons also asked if we started later was bad. I'm going to say, because as far as I know, both Bass both Bath, Ba- Beth, Betha, Betha. Both Bass and Ray have stuff afterwards. So I... And I lack my four hours. Uh, maybe. Uh, but I don't have it. I don't think I have it anymore. God, we are. It's maybe somewhere in... We talk too much. We talk too much when it comes to like find anything. There's just too much shit. That's why we need to pin everything. What Pinterest folder? I don't remember which one. Dude, I have so, dude, I have two, two or three Pinterest accounts. Oh, I did not announce this. Whatever. Too late. We, we made it, we, we did make rules for some, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just ideas right now. It's just ideas. Because there is a lot to be made. So right now, I just, I'm just sham dunging ideas. Because you want, you wanted ideas. I'm giving you ideas and you're making ideas. Here we go. Okay, uh, can I have oars as horns? Can... Uh, can I have oars as horns? Can, um... Underglow higher level slash Kevil level slash boss. Uh, dude, I'm writing it. I'm writing it. Give me some time. Okay, what was the other one? Um... Ah, fuck, yo. I need those emotes, man. Uh, Ramora. It's Remora, not Ramora. Remora. Sa- pirana, sa- la- Rana, sala rana? Sala rana? Sala- Salamander pirana. Pira salama? Salamander. Pira- piramonder. Manchimanchi swarm of small buggers. Uh, Manchimanchi swarm of small buggers. Here we go. Oh yeah, I did a typo. I just said, uh, Remora. It's a Remora, right? Or is it in English? Yeah, Remora. Is that what I thought? Okay. What the fuck is? Oh, interesting. That's funny. And I have an idea. A dream. Um, birds are not dragons. So should I go back to the, okay. They at the stage, they... They become... They become dream charged and psionic. Heavy use of an armored assault. What? Why a bird? That, no, we can't do that. It's a demigryph, and demigryph are trademarked. Demigryph are trademarked. They are trademarked by Warhammer. Uh, become dream charged and psionic with a number to access uh, carcasses without being attacked. Fresh kills. W Vane. Uh, wants your shit. It's a cat, it's it's a shitty, shiny cat. No, there is birds, but you don't harvest part. You do not harvest part from it. I mean, you can harvest parts from it, but it's just bird parts. They don't do anything, uh, they don't do like, ouch. Wyvans, Wyvans can have feathers. Like, they can have feathers, but they're specifically dragon feathers, not bird feathers. Then I have some non-dragon creatures picture for you to use, huh? I don't, okay. Seismic. Triceratops. Triceratops. Seismic triceratops. Uh, what could be... Lightning pearls. How do you write stegosaurus? I'm a stegosaurus! A stegosaurus. Um, hammerhead slammer tyrant, AK T-Rex with a hammer for aid. Uh, what is the one? Uh, frilled fear uh, with their feel to try to goad you into traps ambush. Shadow raptors. Uh, shadow raptors. Uh, what else, what else, what else? Uh, blood tracking therazor. But it's a therazor, right? You don't know you write it? Uh, there's already, there's already a volcanic turtle. There's already a volcanic turtles. It's already been made. It's, um... Wait, did I make it? I don't remember. I mean, that was one of the ideas. Or did I put it somewhere else? I don't remember. Been a while. Uh, is it a Hydra? Oh, the Hydra is the, uh, volcanic one. I did a volcanic Hydra. That's, that's why. Because the volcanic turtle has been done so many times. So that's why, that's why I did seismic instead. Yeah, I, I changed it. I did, um, landshaker and gemwalker. So instead of being like a, because the idea of the shell is hardness, right? So I rather went for like the slow stuff instead of just volcano. Because everyone does volcano turtles, so I was kind of bored with the idea. Yeah, therazor, yeah. Oh, fuck you. I know I'm right. Ther- oh. Oh, theropods! Oh, it's theropods. Okay, I'm wrong. Okay, I need to change that then. Theropod. Yeah, but no, the idea is that it's a turtle, so it needs to be like therthly. Theropod, okay. Theropod. Okay. Uh... Uh, blood tracking theropod. It says like two-legged boots. Uh... Oh, oh, oh! Oh, that's a good idea that I just had. Anything with a bladed weapon with a tail is always cool, eh? Yeah, kinda. I mean, it's just a tail that is bleeding in the end, and it's a bladed weapon. I don't know, it's just, I'm thinking most of the mechanics is just not that special. I don't know. It's kind of cool, I don't know. Um... You can do more with like a tail mace than a tail blade. Because with a mace you can destroy the environment as well. I don't know, I'm just thinking. I don't know, I'm just thinking. Uh, bark. Back bouncer wyvern. Ah, three. Uh... Meh. I mean, if you want to, I don't care. As long as it doesn't be a gajian of them, I don't care. Back bouncer by wyvern. I cling to... I cling to trees, uh, to camouflage. You like birds, like birds and like geckos. And slowly drops, then slowly, um, approach. Pre, oh, talking about cool shit! I press, then slowly approach, pray to silently abduct... Them. A sting tail, sting tail. Uh, hook claws. On wings. You know, to catch them, you know, like you, you, like the, the dragon would like, would like sting, like, like sting them, like, like... Like sting them with his finger, then he would like use his claw, like his hooked claws, literally like, as a good... To like slowly like, like hook them and, 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 um... And like carry them into the tree, you know, like silently, like hook them up. And then carries them, carries them with one hand, like, yeah. Ah. Yeah, I could do that. Mid-sized, uh, mid-sized. Uh, mid-size, clings to trees to camouflage, clings to tree trunks. Because imagine if you play them right, and if people of course don't catch them, you can literally have someone like disappear in the forest. The time. The tree canopy. Swiftly. Then we have like a half monkey, because we have like a monkey, scorpion, gecko wyvern. That's it too what I just made. Because I would think like because of the hooks, it could actually like... Brachiate, which is like, you know, do like the bonobos, like fully swing from branch to branch. It can also like fly to get away and do like the, um, the, uh, the ocs, and then literally it can go in between trees. Yeah, it's, 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 it's literally like mechanically speaking, biologically speaking, it's a monkey, scorpion... Orc wyvern. And gecko. So right now, with all of the ideas that we have, we have four... Four, yeah. Seven wyverns. We still have only three drake turtles. We have, um, it's issues that every drake is unique. Oh yeah, I know why I don't like that. Every drake is unique, there is not one drake that is the same as the other. That's why I, I'm very precise about the word drake. That's why. Okay, tha- I remember my own rules now. And I'm going to add the file. Reminder. I mean, you don't have a choice. That's my decision, like, that's going to be what's happening. Because drakes are miniature version of dragons, so that's why they're unique. And also it allows us to create like hostile NPCs that are unique. Both mechanically and also without, yeah. They have to follow the dragon's plan, like body plan. They are drakes, they're free dragons. Like what people call dragons in D and D are drakes in this setting. They can have some abnormalities, but they mostly have like four limbs, two wings. Like four legs, two wings, always four legs, two wings when it comes to drakes. They all have four legs, two wings, no wyvern body plan, nothing else. They can stand up, they could be standing up, they can have multiple heads, they can have multiple tails. They, they need to at least have, at least have four, four legs, four limbs, four walking limbs, or not walking. Uh, four, like, you know, like two, two arms, two legs, two wings, that was needed. That's, that's the bare minimum. I've reminded drake has attributes also. Drake rules. Drakes all have... Uh, two arms. Minimum. Uh, two arms. Two legs. Two wings. That's the bare minimum for them. And that's because that's, yeah. Because that is literally a dictate to be the superior species to all other draconic, other, other than the dragons. That is the rule, and I will not change that rule. That rule is absolute. That rule is absolute. That has long bones coming out of the end of the bones on its wings it can use to cut. I kind of did that with the back bouncer, would be like... A gorge. Gouger. Hides in ravines, uh, crevasses. And, uh, cliffs. Uh, mimicking. I would say also medium size. Uh, again. Those are just the normal, the average. If you want to make him, if you want to make one bigger, or turn it into a nilit or a boss, you can. That is just the basic line. Uh, mimicking, uh, uh, rock faces. To drop down. To drop down. Clawed with its bladed... Hmm, claw blades. Bladed wings. To quickly dice up. Dice up its prey. Okay, so we have, how many wyverns now? Four. Three, seven. Two, three, four, five, no, eight. There's eight kind of wyverns now. Should we stop at ten or more? Because that's already a lot to work with. How many salamanders? In ideas. One, two, three, four. Good five. Uh, leon worms we got, uh, one. Land tyrants I got two kinds, but in the ideas I have one, two, three, four, five, six. I have six of them. Dude, that's too much work. That's way too much work. That's way too restricting, that's not fun, that's restricting. I don't like it. I do not like it. In Hydra, we have two, we have one really, we have two with a generic one. Leadworms, we have, in ideas, we have one, I can add more. Because that, that would be a lot of work to try to translate that. And also it restricts us in cer- in ways, like... I have two, yep. I have actually one, two, three, as this happened. Uh, so... So yeah. In total, we have... Three... Uh, six... Uh, seven, I mean, I guess eight for dracogen, you know, like... Uh, eight, ten... Uh, sixteen... Sixteen plus, uh, seventeen... Uh, eighteen plus four... The, the demigryph is not as fun as you think, it's, it's literally just a lion with a beak. It's literally just a lion with a beak. That's literally all that it is. Um... Wait, eighteen plus four... Twenty-two. Trent, uh, alloscout, whatever, we have, we have, we have quite a bit. I mean, the land tyrant, I'm just going to give, I mean, just as a generic grass eater. Dude, there's no reason to be pissed about it, it's just the way it is. Oh yeah, I have them opened a bunch of times, damn it. Um... Tameable. Lord Hound. Uh... Uh, bubble... Of course, Cyan is here, so automatically it become, it starts with, uh, uh... Hello Cyan. Okay. I do like to try to do a deep one, hara hara. I could do like even worse, like I literally go like, hara hara. Hey, that one is kind of weird, but kind of nice, I don't know. Feels like, if it acts the reverse of what, what do they call that? Okay, the last one triggered the neurons, okay. Okay, so I need to go deep instead of going cute, I see how it is. Actually, as deep as I can. It's a good experiment. What about that one? Okay, so that was the path, I see how it is. I sorted it out now, I know my hara hara. Five out of five, nice, thank you. So I needed, okay, so I really needed to kill the shame. Okay, what kind of dinosaur could be cute with bubbles? Uh, bub- 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 uh, dinosaur. Let cow size, cow sized dinosaur. Cow sized... Dinosaur, dinosaur in cow sized dinosaur. Cows of the Jurassic, okay. That's not a cow! You lied to me. That, that's, that's a brachiosaurus, that's not a fucking cow! I actually have shadow raptors and something I could be like... That's, that's not a dinosaur, that's, that's an auroch, that's literally... Okay, what is that? Ohhh. I need to be cautious with saying that. No, 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 Dakka, I'm doing tameable, I'm doing the nice ones, I'm doing the cute ones. I'm doing the cute tameable dinosaurs, just in case. Niger. I mean, you could say like Niger, yeah, I'm gonna say with the French accent, Nigerosaurus. Nigerosaurus, because I don't want to say it with an English accent, because... You know internet, I'm literally talking about that, that ain't a human being. Okay, look at that, if, 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 if your, if a family member looks like this, you have more problem. You have way more, i- if your brother looked like this, dude, call your mom, she, she, it's like, something went wrong. Nigerosaurus, that, that witty, a very unusual dinosaur. Ninety-five bros. Okay. Thirty foot long night meter? I mean, it could be. Let's see. Uh, okay, how big is this? Yeah, literally, that's like a little, yeah, yeah, it's two thousand. They look nice, they're like a cow. Okay, wh- wh- uh, wh- what bigger that, in execution, I'm gonna show you elements in sense comparison. Yeah, let's do that. Let's do that, look at them, look at the little, little, little boys, the little boys. That's a specimen, right? That's not a footprint, right? Um... I run in any shot, times, wow. Wow, 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 wow. Uh, na- that's na- Uh that's not me. Oh yeah, because the tail, the tail. Yeah, the tail, the tail's neck. Yeah. Yeah, let's do that. And let's make all the people get cancelled. Uh hey hey. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh bubble. Niger. For once, the French accent is a buff. I can make myself way less sus by saying that word. Uh bubble Niger. Nigerosaurus. Why not add a good tameable quetzal? That's a huge, you know, big zera! And I know you know, you already know. That's going to be so difficult to tame. How do you house it? Also, they eat people. They they literally, okay, quetzal. What? As much as I love American law. Goddamn, writing the words is complicated. He's not a birdy puppy. Quetzalcoatlus. Actually, there's there's actually um Quetzalcoatlus is is in contesting is one of the biggest one. Okay, that's, that's the size of it. Those are huge bastards. Incoming outbreak. They literally look like that. I mean, they are kind of cute if you forget how big they are. Then they become terrifying. Wait, two louson originally considered because they were meant to belong to one species today, two species in another opinion is it. Okay, is that the louson? Okay, louson is way, way smaller. We could do that. We put that somewhere. I mean, we could. I mean, I had that in. Okay. That's manageable. That's less manageable. That's ten meter. Okay, I I'm going to put like uh pterodactyl because they are technically pterodactyl, right? Means they look pterodactyl-y. They are pterodactyl. Pterosora, yes. Pterodactyla, yes. So they are pterodactyl. Yes, look at the pterodactyls actually. Some of them are like, that one, some of them look so fucking, so damn rather happy. Look at that bugger. I'm going to steal your soul. Dude, we, okay, the issue is that our base is built. Look at that little guy. Okay, I need, I need, fine. I, we need, we need a category for land tyrants. I guess, would they be land tyrants? I don't know. What would they be? They're not birds. That's for dead certain. There won't be wavens. We probably hate the shit out of them. Uh why is he not waven? Because uh wavens are very specific and I'm a dick. Uh wavens, wavens are the draconic shit. Um. Not agreed to put it as pterodactyl. It's an, uh, I think. What? Ah. It was not an eye. I was right the first time. Oh. Pterodactyl. And here we go. Because they 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 would not classify as that. Uh and I guess I could put like tameable also as a category. Because I pretty much promised that everything can be tamed. That's not true. Sorry. Because I will not let you tame a tyrannosaur. Sorry to say, it's not arque. Uh. Even fire. This thing is too much work! Mata, it's too much work. Um. But you can't, you can tame raptors. I just don't think that um tyrannosaurs would let themselves be tamed. It's like people always going like, oh, I can tame a bear. Three years later, die, guy died, killed by his pet bear. I can tame a tiger. Guy died, killed by his pet tiger. I can tame a bison. Die, guy died, ran over by his bison and thrown over a cliff. I can tame an alligator in my, my living room. Guy died, head crashed, crashed by, by an alligator. That's a, that's a fish. That's a fish. That's not a dinosaur. It's a fish. And I know I'm right. Ah, maybe. And I need to do like a fucked up fish category. I don't have a fucked up fish category. I guess I could just. Hmm. I don't know. I think the best I really could do to best to buy biome and the costs I could add. Uh. Uh. Fish and shit. It's like the fish and chips. I'm so fucking smart. No, that was pretty obvious. Just pray. Immediately shoot myself down. I come and dream, real eyes from bright, out of me, again and. Oh no. No. Because we are fish people. Oh yeah, we already have fish people. We skate. Oh, oh, it's a global remote. No! It's too stupid. Look at this. Okay, I'm going to show the dumbass face of that fish. And actually, um, actually, do you want Cyan, Cyan? Uh dunclosaurus have been overestimated. They're way smaller. I think that was written. Look at that little fish face. Look at that. Not, oh, you cannot see the face. God damn it! Yeah. Look at those faces! That shit can 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 barely hold a brain cell. And you're gonna be like, oh yeah, I'm going to obey the the fucking fish. What the fuck? Dude, that's way, dude, even as, even even like, even like speaking bottom wise, that's insane to say. Can I be, can can the fucking armored fish be my master? Weird as fuck. Weird as fuck. And don't clip that! He's actually like, oh yeah, that's that's my president. Uh. A cow in it. Yeah, it's actually a tameable one. Da da ra, yeah. Mother, stop it. And I call her mother because technically she, the work has started on the model. I mean, somewhat. It's more like the process has started. Because I don't want to like overpromise stuff. And I don't want to put pressure on Cyan. So I'm just saying like, the process has started. So Cyan is technically. I mean, technically, it's not that much. It will be turned out. And one of the few like bone plated fish, which is why we actually have the skulls of them. Ha ha ha. So now she doesn't know what I just said. She doesn't know what I just said. Oh, by the way, I created the worst enemy of pet collectors. I created a salamander cat. I literally created a salamander cat. Upon reaching another stage, they become dreamcharged and psionic. Heavy use of enamored to access carcasses and fresh kills without being attacked. Very vain. What's your shit? It's a shitty shiny lizard cat. Oh, by the way, enamored is literally like a mind condition. They literally give you like, oh my god, I just criticized all of the cats, all of the cat pet owners. I just did, and I have no regrets. It shall not be removed. That's going to be fucking hilarious. I need to. Well, you got it sorted. It's literally a condition. It's literally a condition that I give them to like, they literally be like, no, I look good. Don't attack me. And you don't. I literally give them mind control, but of the shitty way. I cannot tolerate Dakka to lose this shit when players learn about that. Dakka is just gonna be like, no, they don't exist. You cannot have twenty, you cannot have twenty five of them. One. Wait, you said you had many cats. Oh dude, I have a tragedy about chickens. My brother lost all of his chickens because a fox got in. Dude, the motherfucker. Yeah. Would I, hmm. Which one? Did you bring back the pipe foxes? I. Uh. I I know you would not ask because you would not dare do that. But just just because you are chat twins with Cyan doesn't mean that I have to pay you both. The cat in the bin, we don't have foxes here. Just something that looks like a lion. Okay. Is that in Europe, we have, we have um weasels and we have ferrets. We have like weasels, um stuff and like mistelids that will like wreck the shit out of chickens. Literally, they literally get blood frenzy. Yeah, don't worry about that. Mistelids get blood frenzy and they just kill everything that moves too much. What the hell? How many animals do we have? What the heck? Oh, many. Do you live in the countryside? Do you live in the countryside? Because, yeah, that's countryside. Yeah, four goats. Eldridge, can I ask you something? Uh because I don't know. Like, uh, of course, broadly, vaguely speaking. Uh where do you live like geographically? Like broadly speaking, no specific locations? By the way, I technically know where Cyan lives. I literally have her address. I literally have it. Oh, Michigan. Yeah, countryside. Yeah. This Michigan is the Midwest. I technically know where she lives. Like any tree pops up and. There's the Great Lakes. Oh, so it's more way no, wait, the Great Lakes are like north, right? Wait, if I'm right, if I remember right, because I think the Great Lakes are north of the US. My god, my geography is so great. Yeah, part of, oh my god, my geography, amazing. I sometimes I surprise myself that I remember like useless shit that much. Because I'm never going to be there. I'm never going to visit Dakar. You're gonna never going to see me. But you're going to see me, so, no, I'd go to do it one day. It's just, oh. Nightboard. Oh homestead. That's hard work. Like like homestead and shit is very hard because my brother have some has some animals. Like he has two donkeys. He used to have chickens, but they all died. Because both a fox and a, I don't remember to say it in English, a mink got in and just killed all of them. Because the fox managed to open the roof to get in and then a mink slinked in, like using the open roof to like finish the job. Because foxes are smart, minks are not. Like a mink or something like that, a weasel of some kind. Uh. Yeah. Uh stream, what was the one, what is the one that, stream. Yeah. Stream elements. Uh two, fuck. Okay, whatever. What? I'm already connected. Oh, fucking stream element. Ah! That's why it's not working. It was disconnected for some reason. God, I hate that shit. So now the the command should work. Uh go to specific chicken coop, they can get uh toward chicken and so the, he goes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Because everyone, every single animal want to eat a chicken. That includes deer. Like that, like if you have baby like chicks, if you have chicks, that like animals that want to eat them, it's also deer. It's also like, it's everything. Baby birds are literally the sneakiest bars of nature. And yes, I stole, I stole that sent, I stole that sentence from um Casual Geographic. Because he's absolutely right. Everything, including uh monkeys, including all kinds of birds, including some insects, some spiders, we eat them. We try to eat them. Um centipedes, like centipedes that are big enough, they will try to eat baby chickens. Like baby chicks are literally in danger. That's why they, that's why they reproduce a lot. Okay, chat commands, custom commands. That one should work now. God, I'm pissed off. Yeah, best to keep, yes, yes, yes. Inside the house until they are big enough. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's why often, um. A lot of people, when they breed chickens, uh they literally like have like an indoor space. Uh or like a separate, like a separate building, like like a ca- like um a shack or something like that. When they literally like make sure that it closed, the doors that can close fully. You know, pretty much like, yeah. Dude, I heard that goats are a nightmare to manage. Dude, I heard that goats are a nightmare to manage because they they eat everything. So like they don't leave much in terms of like grass. Um they also will climb anything. They try to escape all the time. The pigs and uh. Pigs have a lot of requirements. If you want to do it properly. They are pretty, though we have designated disposal. Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh what what was I doing? I don't remember. I don't remember. Uh, actually, if you want to talk, if you want to hear some historical talk, um, there, there have been some, uh... That it, that it wing is clearing the area every now and again and trimming the oops. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess if you... If you're well-prepared and have a good setup, there's a lot of animals that just can be, like, mostly left to their own dis- device. My brother has donkeys, they, most of the time, they... Oh my god, let me tell you then, the story of Zita and Ella. The donkey princesses. Um... One is friendly but kind of a dumbass. The other one is very, like, moody. And also a tsundere. Um, ye- yes, my brother's a tsundere donkey. I'm not joking. I wish I was, but I'm not. Um, one is an idiot because she literally going to be like... What do I say? She's kind of foolish because she tried to scratch herself on barbed wire. And we were like, "Oh my god." "Your poor soul." Uh, and his sister was looking at her panicking because she was bleeding. And she was like, "How I hurt now?" And I'm like, "Yes, it's barbed wire." You, oh my god, my modal is flipping out. It's like, "Yes, it's, it's, it's barbed wire. Of course it's going to..." It was not that, that, it was not that much. It was not that big of a problem, but it was just, sometimes you wonder what the fuck is going on. Also, Ella likes getting drunk. She will, if, if there is, like, any, like, um, uh, pine buds, like, fermenting pine burns, apples, or anything like that, she would just scarf them down and get smashed as fuck. So my brother literally has a tsundere donkey and a drunk. Amazing, nature, is it? Um, in it, uh, he also has two cats. I mean, one of the cats is my sister-in-law. So he has one cat to, to himself, he has, I mean, to themselves. They have two donkeys. My sister-in-law has a cat, and my brother has a dog and a cat. And I got nothing. I have two work dogs. That I don't own because I don't have the space for it. I am training, um... The name is still pa- uh, what was the name that gave me? Margaret, Mark, uh, Margaret. Uh, I have Princess AK Margaret as my, as one of the security dog. And I was like, "Really?" They're like, "Yeah, she's, she's just so cute." And I'm like, "Yeah, it's a rottweiler." She will stay cute, but her head will be the size of a fucking bowling ball. And I look at her and I'm like... "You're going to be not taken seriously." "I'm not going to call her princess," because her full name is Princess Margaret, because her daughter named the dog. And she's like ten. And I'm like, "Uh, fine." "Fine." And she's a rottweiler. And I'm like... "Fine." And then I have the boy. I have the boy. But the boy is going to try to be like, to do more like dog contests. So, because he's in the prime of his youth, so they want him to do, like, at least a couple of years of contests. Uh, to get more acc- accreditation as trainers and stuff like that. So I get half-time boy and half-time princess Margaret. And I'm like, "Fuck my life." And then he's like, she's, Margaret is four months old. And so I have to train her, but it's like... I'm like... "It's a puppy. What do you want me to do?" Like, I can train on the basics, but they already did it. And then he was like, "Yeah, but they need the money." And I'm like, "Fine." Like, we don't have a jacket for her. She's too small. And then they did the cutest thing ever. They literally made a custom-made, like, collar and a little jacket for her. Just that she could be, she could be like a small guard dog. That she could be like a small work dog, so she can actually, like... That I can start to train her. They literally made it by hand, like, she saw it, she saw it. And she just showed up with a little jacket, and I'm like, "You don't get why you wear that, but..." Ah, little, little munchkin. So, and by the way, she's already, she already, like... She already has... She already has, like, a temper. She already tried to fight with, like, a Malinois. She already bothers the other dogs. She got disciplined by the other dogs as well, a few times. Because she has not been taught that, no, um... "Your bowl is your bowl, their bowl is their bowl. So don't try to steal food from them," because she tried to be cute and steal from them. She tried to be like, "Oh no, my head fell into your food. Nom, 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 nom." And dude, the way she does that, like, she, she fakes falling down, head first into their food, and then she literally scarf down as much as she can. Because she knows exactly what she's doing. And the other dog was literally, like, threw her off. And, um, the, it was kind of funny because she tried to be smarter than them, and the doberman literally, like, kicked her off of her bowl and ate literally all of her food and his food, and just stared her down, like, "No, what do you do? What do you do now?" And of course, being a puppy, she literally ran to me and started to, to cry and be very dramatic. Despite the fact that she started the shit, and I saw it. She started all of the mess. Little, little bugger. And so I literally had to give her food. But the next day, the next day, she actually, like... Now, the lesson stuck, so she literally, she tried to do it once and got st- got, like, uh, pretty much got, like, stared down. And she literally, like, just ate her own food. And so everything was fine. She's learning, she's learning. I think what she needs now more than anything is socia- like, socialization. So that's what I'm doing. I've tried to, like, let her be part of the pack as much as possible. At work, so that she actually can, like, learn dog rules. Because as much as a human can do, dogs will always do better work. At teaching boundaries. Because if a dog never interact with other dogs, like, that's a huge issue with the Chihuahuas and toy dogs, because their own owners don't, don't socialize them at all. So now they're psycho dogs who don't know how to dog. And again, dude, that's why, okay, a lot of very damaging behaviors happen, as far as I know, when a dog is not socialized. Because then they don't know how to dog. And they don't know how to human, so they improvise, they wing it. So they, they become scared of people, and they become scared of dogs. So they became a bit aggressive. Because they're always like, "He's going to attack me, he's going to attack me." That's why I, I hate the concept of toy dogs. I hate it. Like, from the bottom of my soul, I hate the concept of toy dogs. They're dogs, not toys. Let them socialize. You can have a Chihuahua. You, like, I, I would say maybe not a pug, because those need to be bred back. Like, they need to be bred back healthy. I'm sorry, pugs are miserable. Like, pugs have a miserable existence. As a baseline. And I don't like it, because I don't want animals to, oh my god, my modal freaks out so much. I don't want animals to suffer for no reason, right? So that's why I, I do that shit, you know? Because it's, you know... So now I, I wield a terrifying little furry potato as a... As, um, to stop all the evil people. I shall wield the Doggo Potato at them. And she will probably try to be scary. Oh, Dakka is unmuted.
There we go. The workday is done, and animal, there should be more animals that suffer for no reason. The campaign.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about, like, pugs.
Oh! Yes, Pug Dragon! Give it free problems, it's very easy to kill!
No. I will not make pug dragons. I am not that cruel, Dakka. I am not that cruel. Even I have limits. And, and let's be honest, most of them would have, if they any, have any kind of breath attack, most of them would die trying to use it, because of the cleft lip.
Ha ha ha, you're right.
The, like, pug do, it's like, it's like, uh, bull, bu- uh, bulldog. Like, British bulldog, do breath attack, ugh, and die, and collapses and dies. That's what you're gonna say.
Turns into, collapses into a soup.
I mean, you can eat dogs in the soup, apparently. It happened in China.
Boy, you'd tell chat more about dog soup.
I mean, technically, also, like, in Mexican, no, not Mexican, sorry, Aztecs and Mayas eat, ate dogs. They bred dogs for food. Yeah, which, also the dogs were sacred for, for a reason, but also ate them. I guess it does kind of make sense if they were sacrificed to the gods first, maybe? I don't know. Humanity is weird. Humanity is weird. If you want to look at what's the weirdest animal on the planet, you're looking at it when you, every time you look at a mirror. We're fucking weirdos, man.
I, I don't know. Uh, I think the sea cucumber that shits out its own internal or organs is, uh, is pretty weird.
Okay, but does it build jungles out of, uh, concrete? Uh, does it remove itself from nature fully to live in its own fake nature that it creates?
Nope, it just poops out its own brain.
Yeah, so it's, so we are weirdo. Does it create stuff that don't exist, like gods? Does it wear the skin of the animals defeated? Because it's cold.
Oh, it's actually a good idea for, uh... Because our Nercilla in Monster Hunter does that, where it, uh, hunts down a gift soros, uh, because it, the Nercilla is weak to lightning, so it hunts down...
I don't want to copy, I don't want to copy Monster Hunter. I don't want to copy Monster Hunter, because it's already done, and I don't like copying shit. Uh...
Radio's original, everything's been done before.
Yeah, but I want to do it my, myself. And then go, "Oh, it already existed. Web, I'm going to twist it my own way." Uh, because I am a Grotorian and fuck the world.
Alright, so drakes especially are smart enough to use tools, correct?
They are human smart.
Okay, so a drake that knew its own weaknesses that are biological and could not be magically worked around, would you say it would be reasonable for it to hunt down a creature that has the tools which it lacks and use them itself in the form of fashioned tool?
What do you mean by tool?
Hmm.
Because tool is like a very wide category.
Yeah. Um, let's see. Like, um, oh! Let's say, like, it has a soft spot in its skull. Don't ask me why, I'm not a biologist. Uh, so it ca- it kills...
It just has a growth in bread, in bread. Yeah, sorry.
Stop putting, stop putting dragons in the bakery and baking them in the oven.
Ever.
Um... So it has some sort of, like, it has a, like, a glowing Birkin eyeball resident evil weak spot. Like, hit here for massive damage. Alright? Uh, for the sake of ease, let's say it's on its skull. It grabs the, it kills another creature and grabs that creature's skull to wear as a helmet to protect its weak point.
The main issue is that dragons have, like, like, true dragons have, like, a lot of pride, so...
Yeah, but just to say one of them isn't like a sneaky bastard who's willing to play dirty.
Then it, it would be, I mean, it would hide all the time, because the other ones will want to kill it, because it's weak.
Um, let's see. Okay, things out in nature that use tools. Birds use tools. Monkey uses tools. Um...
Not crazy tools.
No, not crazy tools, but enough of, like, stick. And I know that there's, well, we have, uh, hermit crabs and whatnot that build their own shell to protect their softer bodies.
Yes.
Okay, so not a drake, but something less than a drake that would still have the intelligence to do that. Well, I mean, if a hermit crab can fucking do it, I think any creature can do it. To not kill another creature, but hey, here's a corpse and I can fit inside this part of the bone, and now I have a little shell.
Eh... Uh, you could make it that I'm not a fan of this kind of mobs, in general.
I mean, mechanics come down to it, has ta- it has armor that can be broken, that doesn't have armor anymore.
I mean, I'm just saying that I'm not a fan of designing this kind of monsters. Because...
I will design it, and I'll make it great, and you'll be like, "Oh wow, Dakka, that was so cruel."
I doubt it.
Hmm. Hmm, fuck you anyway.
I mean, that's just, it's just not my jam, because then the monster is just as interesting as the tools.
It manages that it's fun for the players to fight.
Do, do what the fuck you want, I don't care.
Okay.
We can argue about it.
I shall, and I will.
We can argue about it, and I'm not going to budge. I know I'm not, so...
So effectively, we'll just be sitting across from each other going, "Rabble, rabble, 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 rabble."
No, I'm probably starting knowing you. That's most likely what we need to happen. I'm just going to leave the streaming channel alone and mute, mute the Discord.
Now it is my stream, my stream!
No, because I, no, because I muted Discord on the stream.
Hmm.
Because kicking you is, is much less, much more work than just leaving the, the, this thing.
Let's see.
I mean, we do have quite a bit now.
Let's see, uh... Oh, defensive mimicry!
Why do you have that?
Actually, a creature that looks, that looks, that tries to make itself look kind of like, uh, a drake.
Uh, that would be very difficult. Because again, all drakes are unique.
Oh yeah, because all drakes would, all drakes would magically know where it is and kill it, yes.
No, all drakes are unique.
Mm-hmm.
So it's like, you look like something that doesn't exist.
Well, no.
Because all drakes are individual.
I meant more something like, it makes it, it makes itself look, it's, uh, like a salamander that makes itself look like it has wings.
I mean, we already have, like, the swarms salamanders, that's what makes it to, itself look bigger.
Mm-hmm.
They could take the shape of like bigger monsters, who knows?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I've added tar salamanders because then, um, terran spreader. Because that's interesting. Because they're like a living, almost like a living traps that slash terran change. Um...
Oh, okay, I thought of one. Um... And once again, I'm just spinning out a concept. I don't have any specific creature type in mind. Other than this draconic. But it eats, it consists off of bones, it eats them for some reason or another. And obviously it's gonna, you know, it's gonna cover its layer in these bones and it can eat them, munch them up, and then spit out razor bone shards as an attack.
Yeah. Shit, I had an idea and I forgot. Damn it. Yeah, yeah, forget, damn it, it was a good one, as, uh, oh yeah. I'm gonna put it in salamander because that sounds like a salamander thing. Uh, bone salamander, barking thunder salamander, lightning salamander zap zap gonna go fast, tar salamander terran spreader. Uh, what else? I mean, it could be like tar. Mud. Uh, lava. Yeah, tar mud lava salamander terran spreader, yeah. Then just a variant of the same species. Um, slime? Yeah, that could be fun. Uh, frog.
Oh, here's something for you. Uh, as a cool combination. Uh, I don't know if you've ever heard this, but there is acoustic cooling.
What?
Yes, uh, thermoacoustic refrigeration systems operate by using sound waves in a non-flammable mixture of inert gases, helium, argon, air, or a mixture of gases in a resonator to produce cooling. So you can use sound to cool objects.
Yeah, but we already have frostbite and ice, so it's kind of a dark.
No, 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 I'm talking about a combination. A monster that uses thunder magic to also deal water damage.
Why not just deal water damage?
Cause it's a cool gimmick.
It's not a gimmick. It's the same as the frost breath, just with another cosmetic.
Well, um... Fine, I'll, I'll make it, I'll do something cool with it.
That is the same, that's a frost breath. Or like a frost, like a frost spit. It's the same.
Well, the water doesn't get a lot of access, uh, op, there. A lot of access to AOEs.
Yeah, it does.
And sound waves would also just move-
Waves?
Well, not like... Yeah.
I mean, then we can recreate all of the areas and shape and condition, like all of the area of effect with any kind of element. So it's, to me, it's like another step that is not very, I mean, it's cosmetic or anything. So what I have right now? It's a timid lava slime salamander terran spreader, li- lightning salamander zap zap gonna go fast. A barking thunder salamander, wound salamander, frog salamander. Uh, tongue attack, uh, tongue attack. Uh, high dodge. Uh, tongue attack, high dodge, poisonous.
Uh, I have art of a salamander with, uh, plants growing out of its back, so maybe one that encourages rapid plant growth?
That could be a tameable one.
Yeah.
Uh, tame, tameable, tameable, uh, tameable, uh...
I'll see, you could fight it.
I mean, you can fight anything. I mean, if you want, you can just take the shoe away and kick the shit out of it. That's fighting it. You can take the baby and punch it, that's fighting the baby. Uh... A tameable... What? It sounds so bad, a tame. Oh, I know what, what it can be, okay. Uh, life, uh, life spring salamander. Zeus could, Zeus could actually add that. Uh, last thing, salamander tameable. A bull, bullfrog salamanders. Um... What could it be? What's the name? I don't ca-, I'm just typing, oh, computer, I'm just typing this thing because I, because I'm thinking. I said, I was, bullfo- bullfrog frog. Uh, what could I name it? Toadhound, here we go. Salmander. AKA dog. But not dog. A tameable salamander, bullfrog salamander, life spring salamander, a toadhound salamander, uh, lazy boy salamander, I don't know what it is yet, but I'm going to make a salamander. Uh, grass. Grass. Grass ball salamander. Uh, grass ball salamander, what else, what else, what else? Uh... So if, so if I paid attention to chat, apologies, it just, I'm making a gillion salamanders right now. Uh... I mean, the bubble one would be fun, also. Them to catch stuff in the air. Hey, I'm fire. Tunneling, tunneler. Tunnel to-
Wow!
Salmander. Okay, now I have enough salamanders because it's, it's a lot. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, um, sixteen, seventeen, um, eighteen, nineteen, we have twenty salamanders, that's enough. With the generic one, that's enough. More than enough, because there's also a generic ones, you can create the fuck you want. Dude, I literally made the generic one to, for you to be able to make the fuck that I want. And now I'm ended up making the shit that why I make a model. I'm ending making the, make, oh my god, I wasted my time making the fucking model. Fuck, I hate you.
Oh yeah, bro.
Not really, but kinda. Uh... I made it all for no reason! Ah, okay. That's annoying. That's really annoying. Okay. Fucking annoying as footballs. Oh my god, I am annoyed, oh god, I'm annoyed, oh my fucking god, now my brain is like wasting our time.
You'd have to conceptualize these for us to fight them eventually, anyway.
Dude, the point was to make a model and people make their own shit. Now you have to make shit. So I literally wasted my time sadly. Quite not slightly, a lot, actually.
Yeah. Yep.
Because you can't make them!
Well, what were you, what were you gonna do for your campaign? Just make him on the spot?
Yes, I do.
Don't do that.
That's what I've been doing for quite a while.
Yeah.
Yep, it's all improv, buddy. Uh... I mean, mostly. I need to put my bug somewhere, whatever.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back into the Monster Hunter campaign I made and see if I, there's anything I can use.
I don't want to go up his Monster Hunter stuff.
Now, the stuff that I made originally that wasn't based off anything Monster Hunter, and it's my stuff, no, you can't have it, it's mine!
I don't want it.
Me.
It's my shit, I don't want it, I don't want yours. That's why people say like, can I give you a monster? I'm just gonna say no. It's a shithead. Like, I don't want any other people's shit, it's my shit, I make it, it's mine. Good, ah, I'm annoyed. I'm, because I wanted to do, oh, one example and it's gone, then I can just shift it around depending on the enemy, ah! I've gone against my design logic. That was before you started doing a campaign. It's still a great idea and I'm still grateful it. But damn it, the failings of others. They weigh down on my great self.
By the way, I'm pretty sure, uh, the feat that you used, uh, for the little demo for the monsters, I'm pretty sure it's broken. I went and looked at the salamander one and the formulas weren't working right and I fixed it.
Oh, because I don't choose them.
If you copied that.
I don't choose them. They don't have any fits, I don't care. I don't, I don't give them fits, they don't matter.
Hmm. No, I just meant for the level, the stat calculation.
Oh, I don't care either.
Eh, alright.
It's good to do manually because it doesn't matter. The stats, the stats of the monsters don't follow a level stuff. So, levels don't matter. It's more like stages. So like, if it's, if it's, if it's like, uh, juvenile is pretty much like level one to level four. I guess for normal monsters. Then adult is like level four to level eight. Or level six, no, level eight, and then above that is elite and boss, when you cannot, when you could defeat them alone, but it would be quite, I mean, boss, no, boss, you can't defeat a boss alone. Unless you literally like crit every turn and dodge every attack. I don't see you winning one. Or maybe the terrain. But again, that's more like the DM deciding to be charitable, it's not like stat for stat. And that's outside of our purview. So, yeah. Yeah, because it's, because what we design is stat for stat, we don't design for like, you know, if you decide, I don't know, to dance on the grave of its grandmother, some shit, that's not us, that's a DM. Um... Uh... By the way, a folk on the Discord, I have banned uh, three people on the Discord because they were sus and probably bots. So they've been kicked out. And... I've made enough. I mean, drakes, I can really add more because this is recreating bosses. Uh, drag turtles, I could add. The issue is that drag turtles are big, like they are always big. So there's not that, there's not that many around. So, almost, I almost wanted them to give them the elite rank by default. If they're like an adult, straight up, yeah. I guess juvenile, yeah, because juvenile would be like hanging out on the shell of the adult. So yeah, yours will be dealing with an adult. So yeah, also because it's cuter. Hydra, I could add more hydras, it's not that difficult. It's just variation depending on the elements and stuff. Uh, maybe a couple of gimmicks, but yeah. A land tyrant, I need more tameable ones.
Hmm.
And you're going to hate me for one of the name of the tameable ones. But that's what it's called, I did not make it. Uh... A roller barb, I don't know. Uh, what's the name of those? Permian ones, not pernianzy. Uh... Before, I don't know, synapsid, what's the name? Yeah, synapsid. Synapsidae, yeah. Ray. Ionization is a ray. Aggravation. Yeah, because technically we are synapsids, that's true. I mean, if you go to the whole desk, it's, you know, go back, back, back. Do you know? Do you know? Have to do the... Eeeh, hey, how? Yeah, oh, look at the boy. Look at you, you smile. Okay. Ooh, that's an ugly motherfucker. But we can use that. That's spooky. Ionization is a ray. Aggravation. What's that? Okay, that's the weirdest lizard boy, not lizard. Yeah. Because there's also like gorgonopsid, I like gorgonopsids. I do like them. I do like them. Should we make everyone lose their shit? And put them in land tyrants? Because that's kind of funny. Because they're all going to lose their minds about it, all the nerds. So... It's kind of funny. Uh, you know what? Yes, fu- fuck the police and put them there. Uh, gorgonopsids. Gorg- gorgon- Gorg- oh, oh, seeds. I mean, they're not dragons. I guess, yeah, I need to put them into the other category. It doesn't work. Ah! Doesn't work. Doesn't work. Does it work? I don't think so. Fuck. Fuck, fuck, fuck. Fuck, fuck, fuck. Dammit. Do I give a shit? Uh, gorgon obsids. What else can I add? What else can I do? What, listrosaurus, here we go, listros, it has a sorus in the name, let the nerd fight. Uh, listrosaurus. Uh... Let the nerd battle it out. I don't think you could... Uh, mess. Tailed. Uh, moose chops, here we go, moose chops. AKA scaly cows. There we go. Uh, hope everyone is having a decent day. Hope it was not too much of a bingyish. Yeah, it's literally somewhat of a cow. Who cares? And I think I'm done for tonight, yeah. I, I've run out of energy, like I'm literally starting to like, I'm getting quite hungry as well. I thought eating once before stream was enough, it wasn't. And no one is watching no more. Okay. I hope it's lying, but I doubt it. Oh, two people are watching now. I wonder if it's, I don't know, I don't want to think about it, I guess, uh, yeah, I should not have done that. I should not have done that. I should not have done that. Okay, have a good evening everyone, bye.